This regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for North Idaho College is resuming on the same date, February 22nd, 2023, at 6:26 PM, resuming from an executive session down below where we recessed. And a quorum is present of fellow trustees. Welcome, everyone, to the business meeting of the Board of Trustees. So please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. As Board Chair, I have a few comments to make at the start of this meeting that I hope will set a positive tone for this evening, as it's the responsibility of this Board to set the tone for the college. So how we act here at this Board meeting sets the tone for how others around us will act. While the Board has several agenda items tonight to support the meaningful day-to-day work of the college, I know accreditation is a top priority for everyone who is here and cares about the future of NIC. On February 9th, the NWCCU issued NIC a sanction of show cause letter that requires the college to submit a show cause report, which is now due March 31st of this year, 2023. The following day, I, Trustee Corkle, Dr. South, Steve Kurtz, and Art Mackimer, met with Dr. Soni Ramaswamy and others from NWCCU. We discussed how serious the show cause is. We learned that the NWCCU is evaluating everything: how we comport ourselves at Board meetings, how we work in relationship together, how we are reducing the disruption, and how we are being respectful and supportive of one another. We discuss... Trustees are being evaluated, and NWCCU are watching everyone, including the participants tonight, with our Board meetings, to see the support for the college and importantly, our students. Trustees are being... Sorry. The Board has been working on our Board development and working together this past month. We have a pathway of action, and we'll meet at least two times a month for Board training and engagement with consultants facilitating our work from the National Association of Community College Trustees, two of them being Ken Burke and Dr. Debbie D. Thomas. So personally, I am committed to us doing the significant work needed for us to show the accrediting commission and our students and our stakeholders that we are committed to being a functional and effective Board of Trustees. Understanding the Board's role in giving the day-to-day responsibility of running the college, giving that responsibility to the President, is essential. I'm committed to looking toward the future, and I ask each and every one of you to join me in this commitment. So, moving straight onwards, we're going to move into public comment. So as noted on the agenda, public comment is allowed at the discretion of the Board Chair in accordance with Policy Number 20103. And public comment is limited to matters that are posted on this evening's monthly Board meeting agenda. I have noticed a couple people that didn't necessarily address Board agenda items, but we will work through that. It's my intent to get everyone who has signed up on the list for public comment, and we have four pages worth, roughly, I would estimate between 60 and 80 people. It is...I have reserved the right to end public comment at any time after 30 minutes, but any public comment will only be done under consultation from my fellow trustees, all of us up here. Again, it's my sole decision as Board Chair, but I value the time...I personally value the time and effort people spent to come communicate with us. I read every single email that comes to the Board. Sadly, I have been falling behind in replying, and I know my fellow trustees, and I value the time that each and every one of you braved the snow to come down here. So thank you for caring. I hope public comment will be a model example of cooperation and respect between the public and trustees, but can only succeed with everyone's willing cooperation tonight toward that goal. Individuals who desire to be heard on an agenda item have signed up by 6:00 PM, and it was sharply cut off, and listed the specific agenda item. If you wish to share comments with the Board but not speak at tonight's meeting, you may always...you're welcome to send an email to at board@nic.edu. And two minutes, it will be strictly cut off. The Board of Trustees will listen to public comment but not enter into discussions with those wishing to comment before the trustees. If there are questions posed or misinformation shared, it will...we will be paying attention, and interim President South will work with his administrative team on supplying answers and giving factual information to be shared at a later date. When I say "on deck," that means you're next, and please be near the microphone if you're out of the room. I'm sure they'll let you in. And the first person on the list tonight is Alex Elliott. Will you please make your way to the microphone? And Amanda Lienart are both addressing accreditation and show cause. Amanda Lienart, you're on deck. How are you doing, time? Okay, wonderful.
My name is Alex Elliott, and I'm a highly-involved student here at North Idaho College. All comments are my own and relate to the agenda item, Accreditation and Show Cause Update. I am currently enrolled in 18 credits, as well as hold four on-campus jobs. I am an ASNIC Senator and President pro tempore. I'm an Associate for the NIC Student Events Board, and I work at the NIC Writing Center, and I also work for the Trio Program. I'm an editor for NIC's Literary Magazine and President of the NIC English Club. What about the younger generation? Do you want this college to be here for your children, your grandchildren, then resign? It is explicitly stated that you are the reason and the only reason that we are on the brink of losing accreditation. So if you want this college to be here for your children and your grandchildren, then please take yourselves elsewhere. The college needs people in charge that are willing to save it. We have allowed ample time for you three to change the direction you are spiraling us towards. Sadly, now, we are at the brink of losing it all. You've already demonstrated that you are not committed to saving the college's accreditation, so just resign now, so that someone who actually cares about this college can save us.
Amanda Lienart. On deck is Erin Davis.
It's Lienarte.
Thank you.
My name is Amanda, and I'm a local home health nurse who graduated from NIC and subsequently LCSC's RN to BSN partnership with NIC in 2020, a partnership that is very close to becoming non-existent due solely to the actions of certain members of this Board, something we, the community, and current students alike, who were assured by those very same members and their affiliates, wasn't even a possibility. I'd like to share some quotes with you that didn't age well. Mackenzie, November 2022, "What about accreditation? Isn't it still at risk?" No, that was fake news. Accreditation has never been at risk. McComber, before the general election, "The scare tactic complaints about NIC's accreditation seem to be a smokescreen." Yet here we are, it seems, one step away from losing accreditation, as the NWCCU has issued show cause. Losing accreditation means many things to different aspects of this community. The majority of this Board claims to serve, but I'd like to share what it means to me. Losing accreditation means no nursing program. No nursing program means no new nurses. No new nurses means Kootenay Health Hospital, and thus its ER are understaffed. Understaffed ER means when your loved one is rushed by ambulance needing life-saving treatment for a massive heart attack or stroke, they won't get that TPA or angioplasty in time. But I'm sure this won't affect any of you fine people, not your brothers, sisters, fathers, mothers, sons, or daughters, but on to more important matters, like what the plans are for the land NIC is on once, I mean if, NIC loses accreditation. If I remember right, no part of the property shall be used for commercial purposes but be maintained for public recreational purposes, except that any part may be devoted to a general public hospital or public educational institution. But I'm sure when the deed goes to the county to decide, the fine people of the county commissioners will do it justice, just as the majority of this Board has for the existing college. Shame on you, I forfeit my time.
Trevor, Erin Davis, please. Trevor Miller. If we could...we have a lot to people, and I'd like...not that I'm against or supportive of any...but if we could save the clapping, just to get everyone...I want to get everyone in, and that's the goal tonight, we hear from people. Thank you. State your name, please, and your topic.
My name is Erin Davis. I'm speaking about accreditation and the show cause sanction. I'm an English professor and a Writing Center Coordinator, and I'm in my 15th year of working for North Idaho College. In its February 8th letter to the NWCCU, Dr. South outlined the training sessions the Board has undergone in order to understand best practices in community college governance and to understand and accept their roles and work out their differences. Some of that training was very expensive, with consultant Dr. D. Thomas earning more than $15,000 per 20 days of work. Dr. South has written that the NWCCU wants the Board to take responsibility for its past actions that have led us to our show cause sanction. To be clear, it is the votes and actions taken in November and December by three trustees that led NIC to its show cause sanction. Two of those three have been on the Board for years, one for more than a decade, with time enough to understand their roles and obligations as trustees. In its show cause letter, the NWCCU outlined a specific timeline of events and list of concerns, none of which can be fixed by just having the Board appear to get along better, and none of which this Board has shown any signs of addressing in any concrete way so far. Among these are frequent changes in leadership with little to no input from relevant stakeholders and without following institutional policies and procedures, continued exodus of faculty, staff, and senior administrators, multiple no-confidence resolutions from faculty, staff, and students that this Board has never engaged with or responded to. To save this college, this Board must repair these problems by reversing the actions it took in November and December, reinstating President Swain, and addressing the concerns raised in all past no-confidence votes by constituent groups. And if the Board majority has no intention of doing so, this campus and the community it serves deserves to know. And if that's the case, Chair Mackenzie and Trustees Banducci and Wagner should resign.
Trevor Miller, please. Again, please hold your full applause. Time is of the essence.
Thank you. My name is Trevor Miller. I work with local high school students.
Step closer to the mic.
I used to use a mic, sorry. My name is Trevor Miller. I work with local high school students. My only interest here is for the students that I work with. NIC is the best option they have locally, one of the lowest-cost options. This is their future. I work with students that don't have much right now. A percentage of my students are actually homeless. This represents the best option for them to have a good life. I would love to see the Board put all their differences aside and continue forward. This is huge. With the other speakers, if you can't put your differences aside or leave the political things aside, you should resign. I'm not going to go after individual members or talk about things in the past. I would just like to see some positivity. Last couple of meetings, I've heard some great remarks from Dr. South. I think he's moving in the right direction. I'd like to see more of that. I'd like to see a lot more transparency, and I think we do need to go back and look at what happened. How do we fix it? How are we sure that it never happens again? I'm still left with a question. Where is Dr. Swain? Why was he placed on administrative leave? I think you owe the community answers for that. Why are we spending millions of dollars on these extra positions? Why are we sending out useless subpoenas? Why are we wasting money and hurting the college? Why do you want to take that away from my students? I'd love an answer, but I know I'm not going to get one. Thank you.
Lena Sapp. And on deck is Lane Stid...I'm sorry, this is hard for me. Stid, okay, you know who you are, good. And both speaking to accreditation.
Mine's on accreditation. My name is Lana Sapp. I do not support the Board's current direction. It impacts current students with a potential loss of accreditation. It impacts businesses that depend on educated workers. It impacts running start students whose credits may now not give them a college head start. It affects Kootenay County taxpayers like myself, who contribute to NIC funding. It could affect future state funding, ability to pay off building bonds, and cost of tuition if student attendance falls, which it will with loss of accreditation. I've added up some of the costs this Board has accrued due to its legally questionable actions: a $500,000 settlement to former President Rick McLennan, a $230,000 salary for former President Swainy, the newest interim president's salary of $235,000 plus $30,000 signing bonus, $35,000 contribution to retirement, $36,000 housing allowance, and $27,000 for moving expenses, a new lawyer at $325 an hour when the prior lawyer was paid $200 an hour, almost $25,000 in legal fees for the month of December alone. It totals over $1.1 million. Has it improved our college? I don't think so. It has caused dissension, disruption, and interruption in what should be happening, providing an education. No dollar value can be placed on the potential loss of a community college that has benefited businesses and the people in the five northern counties. Quit trying to destroy our college.
Thank you. Lane Stidham. And Anthony Overholt is next.
How you all doing? You don't know who I am, I'm going to speak about accreditation, but so you don't know who I am.
Please state your name, sir.
Yeah. My name is Lane Stidham. I go to college here at NIC. I'm double majored in the History Program and the Outdoor Recreation and Leadership Program. I work three jobs on campus, and I've been a resident in the dorms for two years now. So to say that I'm not involved in NIC would be wrong, and I really care about the college, so I hope you listen to what I have to say today. Me and countless of my peers believe the same thing that I'm about to say, and it's that we believe that you guys are driving this college into the ground. We would ask that you reinstate Nick Swain and that you would resign. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Okay. Anthony Overholt. And Kenny Moore is on deck.
Anthony Overholt's an RA, and he's got a call for some RA stuff.
All right. I will...please have him remind me that we skipped him, and I'll...
All right, thank you.
Let me know when he's back. Maybe just tell him to come to the microphone. Kenny Moore and Jennifer Drake is on deck.
Good evening. My name is Kenny Moore. I've been a resident here for 22 years.
Step closer to the microphone.
How's this?
Wonderful.
Thank you. We've got some new trustees on our trustee board. I'm very happy to see that, because it's a chance for us to go in the right direction. There's this cancer that's been at NIC, has been here a long time. It's been here for years.
Stay closer to the microphone.
And it is astounding the impact that it's had in our area. One of our trustees, former trustees, contacted the accreditation board before they came here, individually, by person, and contaminated that before this interview actually started with NIC. I don't know what happened, and I don't know what the result was, but I do know that that's absolutely non-desired. It should happen with everybody in one room, one accreditation, one look, one whatever. This college means a lot to this community. Another trustee resigned, just so they could get replaced by somebody not in this area. I don't know what the politics of that were about, but I can guess. That forced the state to jump in and appoint trustees for a temporary time period. How did 40% reduction in enrollment at NIC result in 41% increase in funds that came into There's a lot of things going on the side that has to do with money, and that has to be eliminated. I thank our trustees for standing up to be ethical, be truthful, and to be righteous in what they do. This means a lot to our community. Education means the world to me. I just encourage you to do the best job you can, and to do it in unity, and to get this garbage and cancer behind you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jennifer Drake and Ariye Blumenfeld.
Jennifer Drake, accreditation. In 1999, two psychologists published a study called "Unskilled and Unaware of It: How Difficulties in Recognizing One's Own Incompetence Lead to Inflated Self-Assessments." It describes a cognitive bias whereby people with low ability or expertise tend to overestimate their abilities. It is now widely known as the Dunning-Kruger effect, and we have a perfect examples in the form of Trustees Banducci, Mackenzie, and Wagner, the three trustees to whom I direct my comments today. Being incompetent isn't a crime in and of itself, but what you have been doing to NIC is surely criminal. You claim to be fiscal conservatives, but you've already cost this community over $5 million in lawsuits, double salaries, increased insurance rates, and exorbitant lawyer fees. And you continue to rack up the bills, all to be paid by us, the taxpayers. That is a gross mixed management of funds and flies in the face of all conservative values. You have entirely neglected your fiduciary duties, and I know a number of attorneys who would agree with me for a lot less than $325 an hour. And while I feel that you should be held personally responsible for the financial damage that you have caused, you can't put a price tag on what you have cost the students. Loss of accreditation means loss of credits. Many students who have come to NIC for a great education at a reasonable price are now being forced to watch their credits become meaningless as you use political propaganda to destroy everything they've worked to build. Lies are still lies no matter how many times you say them. They simply do not become true through repetition. The truth is that we are in this position today because of your grievous misconduct. But one question remains above all others: why? What is your endgame? Because no matter how much you look out into the community and tell us we're the problem, it's you who are destroying NIC. Look at the people in this room, not the ones you begged to come to support you. Look at the students and the faculty members and the people who showed up because they truly care about NIC and have spent decades of their lives making a positive impact in this community. Look at them and tell them why you want NIC to lose accreditation. Because when you set aside all the lies, the obfuscation, the bad photo shopping, and childish cartoons, the truth must remain. So what is it? You must answer to your constituents. Again, I ask, what is the real reason you're destroying our college? You're dragging down a beloved institution with your...
Thank you very much. Next. Ariye Blumenfeld. Welcome. Please state your name and topic.
Hello, I'm Ariye Blumenfeld, and a student at NIC, and I am responding to the accreditation agenda item. It is my belief that the Board members truly care about our college and seek to do right by us. It seems they are addressing NWCCU's points in good faith. Asking Trustees Banducci, Mackenzie, and Wagner to resign will not help us, and I think they can see that this hour would be not good, maybe the end. The show cause letter referenced in the ASNIC...wait. The show cause letter referenced an ASNIC vote of no confidence, which was decided by four yes votes out of eight representatives, and I am unaware of the student body being consulted. I'm personally aware that there are many students here who support the Board whom that vote does not represent. They are terrified to speak out for fear of reprisal. Sadly, such fear is well-founded. For accreditation's sake, I hope NWCCU becomes aware of the falsehood of the narrative that the student body cohesively stands against the Board. Of course, you can disagree with my positions and still share my goal of our institution's prosperity. However, those who hate one another cannot work together. If you take anything away from my speech, be it this: If NIC is to fall, it will be because we hate one another, which is the sin and the tragedy of murder. Those who make hate for the Lord of their life are already dead, and the dead cannot support a college. So sincerely, I ask every person in this room, no matter your positions, to love the very people in this room whom you most despise, as Jesus modeled when He sacrificed Himself to save those who rejected Him. And seeing the success of any agenda item in any meeting is directly dependent on the hand of the Lord, I beg everyone in here who believes to find it in your heart to ask God to place His almighty hand upon our cherished institution and upon our depraved hearts. Thank you.
Your prayers are appreciated. Juliana Seinbaum is next, or up, or...that was Ariye. And Trent Derrick is on deck. Trent Derrick. Please state your name and topic.
Hi, my name is Juliana Steinbach, and I will be talking about the topic of accreditation. I am a first-year student here at NIC, and I moved here from Billings, Montana, to attend here. And I know I speak for many students, faculty, and staff when I say that it breaks my heart that we have to fight for the school that we call home. And we would not be in this position if it was not for the actions of the Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees has put our accreditation in jeopardy for their own political agenda. The students, faculty, and staff have all presented votes of no confidence to the Board, and nothing has changed. The best bet that we have to save our accreditation is if Banducci, Mackenzie, and Wagner resign. The school means more to us than it clearly means to them, and we will do everything in our power to save it. Thank you.
Trent Derrick and Gregory Green is on deck.
Trent Derrick, accreditation. My name is Trent Derrick, and I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Schools in the Coeur d'Alene School District. Our district has had an incredible partnership with NIC for many years. The opportunities NIC provides for our matriculating students to continue their education has been extensive. For the last several years, NIC has also allowed hundreds of our students to earn college credit while attending high school through the state's dual-credit program. Currently, 77% of our students who are enrolled in dual-credit classes are enrolled at NIC. In addition, we have had dozens of students in the past earn their Associate of Arts degree from NIC prior to graduating from high school. The proximity of NIC to our high school campuses makes this achievement possible for these students. Our county's workforce needs NIC to continue to provide the training necessary so that our businesses have a trained workforce. It also provides an affordable option for students who seek to complete two years of education prior to transferring to a four-year university or college. The faculty and staff of NIC have been incredibly supportive of our programs. In addition, our community has benefited greatly from this partnership. In light of the February 9th letter from the NWCCU to NIC, this partnership is in grave jeopardy. It is our district's hope that you will do whatever it takes to maintain your accreditation with the NWCCU so that the students in our community can continue to access the valuable education that has been provided to them thus far. Losing accreditation would be devastating, and from our perspective, unnecessary. We stand in support of NIC's faculty and students, and voice strong support for the existence of NIC as an accredited community college in our city. Thank you.
After Gregory Green, we're going to skip back to Anthony Holt.
Oh, Greg Green.
Welcome. Please state your name and topic.
Greg Green. I'm concerned about the accreditation of this institution. I was born here. I was raised here. I went to school at Coeur d'Alene High School. I've built 15 companies or more in Spokane and Coeur d'Alene, built my last company here, put millions in this community. My family doesn't really want me here tonight. They want me to spend time with them, not to be here, but we're here for a reason. I'm greatly concerned that the Board is where it's at. You should not be proud of where you are right now. I sat on the Board of Regents at Gonzaga University for eight years. We never had a situation like this, ever, because we would manage one another, and God was very, very deeply involved in our beliefs and how we managed ourselves. But having given so much time to companies and my foundation, I'm here because we need leadership, and it's clear that what's happening right now with this Board is not functional. This is not how a Board operates. It is not. And silence is deafening. That bothered some of you, I understand that. It's time to move forward, to make change. And I will tell you that as a businessman, I am very willing to help in 2024 when some elections come forward. There's some changes that are going to happen, and it's necessary. This community, this institution, is a part of this community, and we're grateful to have it, but we need responsible, physical responsibility. You need to take care of your teachers, the people that care for you, your students. All the people in this community care deeply about what's going on here right now. I have no dog in the hunt, other than I care as a person and as a human being. And if I have to open up my wallet to make some change, I will...
Thank you. Going back to Anthony, please state your name and topic.
Hello, I'm Anthony Overholt. I'm a second-year student here and also an RA over at the Residence Hall. I've enjoyed the time that I've spent here at NIC. I've had excellent teachers, I've had great faculty experiences, and seen a student body that works harder than any I've ever seen before. Damien, our student president, he's both our student president and majoring in physics and mathematics, two very hard fields. But every night, I'll see him in the lobby. He works tirelessly. He hands out papers, information, he has personal conversations with people, and he's doing hard work to save NIC. I'll see the others on ASNIC, they're doing great work as well. I want to thank those on the Board who are doing the right thing tonight. I want to say thank you to them, but the corruption that I see beside them is unacceptable. I want to say thank you to them, but the corruption that I see beside them is unacceptable. And I ask that those members that are doing it wrong stand up and do what is right for the students of NIC and the future of this school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karim Shepler and Robert Shepler is on deck.
My name's Karen Shepler. Tonight I'm talking about the Head Start program that was on the agenda. For those that don't know, Head Start is a wonderful program that's hosted here at NIC to provide endangered children, minority children, marginalized children, an opportunity to be ready for school. I want to thank Beth Ann Fuller and her team for the evaluation that they just finished. Her documentation is impeccable. They're self-reflective practitioners. They are clearly on top of what their constituents need, which is our community. I saw in the report the financials for this group, and I pray and I hope, because those are the only things I can do, that the accreditation mess that's happening right now does not impact the federal dollars that come into this program, because then not only are you killing the college, you're killing the community and all of those children who have an opportunity to be ready for school. So maybe take just a moment and think about the far-reaching impacts your individual actions are having on not just the adults of this community, but the children of this community. These children who are four years old and have no options but this program at NIC. They're homeless, they're lost, like the other speaker said. You are jeopardizing marginalized children, not just the people who are over 18 that get to go to this school. So while you haven't all shown integrity, I hope maybe after tonight, you'll figure it out.
Thank you. Robert Shepler, charity is on deck. Please state your name.
My name is Robert Shepler, and I came to speak tonight about the accreditation. The letter from the NWCCU is very specific about the activities that must be addressed in order to assure NIC remains an accredited school. Dr. South, you've appealed to the community to work together to save our school, that's a very valid goal, and I admire you for that. One of the concerns specifically mentioned in the letter has to deal with hiring of Art McCumber. The unusual hire of an attorney who has contributed to three members of the Board of Trustees without proper vetting of the position and a subsequent billing of nearly $50,000 in the last two months since his hire has been a burden upon taxpayers of Cootney County and has led to the filing of multiple lawsuits against NIC. Mr. McCumber, your hiring specifically is mentioned as an issue and must be resolved. You need to resign immediately due to your improprieties. I look forward to your future disbarment hearings in the state of Idaho. Mr. Wagner, your focus on creating additional sports teams and failing to address the letters of no confidence that have been presented to the board have been brought as points of concern for the NWCCU. Your resume points to your success of leading Fortune 500 companies in the 80s. It's easy to see why you're a former and not a current leader. Since retaining your position, you presented no original ideas and served as a puppet for other members of the board. You specifically mentioned multiple times that accreditation is not at risk. You either need to resign your position or shift your focus to preserving this institution. Finally, Mr. McKenzie, your actions in December at multiple meetings and the violating of meeting laws is called out in the letter. Your political ambitions are obvious to everyone in the room who even pays a cursory glance in your direction. Enjoy your view from your current position, because I feel confident that after this fiasco you've helped create, you fully need to resign. I fully expect your political career to end here. I don't think you'll be able to be elected dog catcher and athlete after this mess. Gentlemen, do your best.
Thank you. Moving to charity, and Jimmy McAndrew is on deck.
Good evening, Chairman McKenzie, Dr. South and the rest of the trustees. Thank you for being here tonight. Even though I worked on a campaign of an individual that did not win in the last election, I support this board and their entire endeavors to keep the accreditation at NIC. I attended NIC, and I want the public to remember that this is not a junior college, it is a community college. I used this as an adult with young children at home to further my own education, and a lot of the students here do the same thing. They are not just 18-year-olds, 19-year-olds. I was a working mother, and I needed to use the community college. I did not go on to a four-year institution, it was not necessary. My children attended here using dual credits. It was fantastic because they got basically what I had to pay for out of my own pocket, paid for by the state during the dual credit program. And so I just want to thank Dr. South first for explaining the accreditation process in the last meeting that I sat in. And I watched when all of you went down to Boise to attend the Education Week down there, and I really appreciated all of you being together down there. And I also appreciated how you answered some questions, Dr. South, that were posed to you. It gave me a better understanding of the entire process, and I feel that we can come to a successful resolution. I want to thank some of the staff and faculty here for toning down some of what I felt to be really out of characteristic behavior for professionals in public. I had always attended these meetings for Zoom until I saw stuff kind of turn into a circus, and most of it was done by faculty or staff in the business meeting. So I'm glad that that has changed as well. So thank you for listening to everyone's comments. I fully support your endeavors, and thank you, Doctors South, for what you're doing.
Jimmy McAndrew, Krista Hazel.
Good evening, Jimmy McAndrew, accreditation. And I'm not going to belabor my tax dollars, I'm not going to belabor the 62.5% increase in our legal fees from the college, I'm not going to belabor the fact that we're, I've lost count of how many presidents we're actually paying at this point in time. I mean, it's true. I mean, in the private sector, none of this would fly. It would, I mean, and if you shake your head, you're lying to yourself. I mean, it's obvious that the Northwest CCU has lost faith in the direction. It's too risky, everything, everything that we have on our plate right now is, your bond rating, your insurers, your local school districts that are dropping dual enrollment, they've all deemed you too risky, your actions to be too risky. And I want to encourage you, I'm not looking for you to resign tonight, okay? I mean, we have our differences, but I thank you for stepping up. It takes a courageous person to sit in those shoes and sit up there, but you're denying reality if you can't read these letters and say that lack of leadership isn't the top priority. And you, I mean, I heard Dr. Swain when he was hired. I listened to him, and I thought, this guy, veteran, accomplished, returning to his roots, coming across the country to take this job, he'd be out of his mind! And he took it despite those challenges, and I can read through his contract in five minutes, and it's taken us months and with some ambiguous contract discrepancy? Hire him, reinstate him, nothing against Mr. South, but reinstate him, get some leadership, get some semblance of some foundation, and we can move on. But you need to reinstate Swain, please.
Thank you. Krista Hazel and Brent Regan on deck.
Good evening, board members. My name is Krista Hazel. I am an alum of North Idaho College, and I am a former ASNC president. First and foremost, I want everybody to know I stand with my fellow ASNC representatives. Once you are ASNC, you are always ASNC. I have really enjoyed spending time with the young leaders that are part of the North Idaho College community. They are wonderful, young adults that love this school. And getting to know them and understanding that life is so different for them. Some of them have real challenges in life. We heard one student in December, he discussed that he had been homeless. But I'm not sure that this board has responded to the students that have spoken up. I'm not sure that this board has acknowledged the votes of no confidence. But you want to talk about how it's about the students, so let's make it about the students. I received an email this week that says, Children's Village lost two employees. It cost them $18,000 because those two employees couldn't rely on North Idaho College being there for them. Please, tonight you will have presidential leadership on the agenda. What I take that to mean is you will discuss it, and you have the option to make some action. NWCCU wants you. They want you to have a permanent president, and we have one, Dr. Swain. Greg, please, if there's a 2-2 split, the decision to drive this college off a cliff is yours. Please make the right one for your children, or we will remind them
Thank you. Brent Regan is on deck. Nina Beasley is on deck. State your name and topic, please.
Brent Regan, accreditation, I want to thank you for having me tonight. You've got three main duties as a board, to set policy, to approve the budget, and oversee the president. The first rule of boards is that once a decision is made, it becomes the position of the entire board, not just the majority. You may not prevail today, but tomorrow may be different, and you will expect your fellow trustees, all of them, to support the board's decision. Accreditation is awarded by independent accrediting agencies that periodically examine schools' curricular offerings to confirm that they are providing the students with a quality education. What academic or curricular shortcoming caused NIC's accreditation to come under scrutiny? The answer is none. Accreditation is being threatened for political, not academic reasons. Why? Because there are those who are unwilling to accept the outcome of the last two elections. After the first election, one elected trustee was blackmailed into resigning with a threat of litigation. Two more trustees resigned in a scheme to have a majority of the board appointed by the State Board of Education, who themselves are appointed. While that board majority may have been legal, they were not legitimate elected trustees representing the voters. This last election was well-engaged. Billboards, advertisement, mailers, radio, TV, voter turnout was high, but the people whose candidates won most of the seats aren't happy because they didn't win all of the seats, and proceeded to have a tantrum, protesting, screaming, heckling, interrupting, assaulting, pulling fire alarms. If this kind of behavior is what we can expect from graduates of NIC, how to lock the doors tonight? Do you want to live in a society ruled by the loudest, most obnoxious people, or the one where the majority chooses the leaders? Elections have consequences. The NWCCU is looking for stability. Dr. South is well-qualified for the task. It's time to stop fighting to overturn the will of the people. And I will close with a question that everybody here should be asking if they're interested in saving accreditation. What can I do to help?
Thank you. Nina Beasley is on deck. Rod Schobert's on deck.
Nina Beasley Ratriam. Accreditation has been weaponized, NIC is being used as an example that if you go conservative, you'll lose your accreditation. Dr. Ramaswamy, president of the NWCCU, has not followed his own agency's policies. The show cause letter mentions that the NWCCU received multiple complaints from the community and NIC staff. Under the policies of the NWCCU, they only investigate complaints about accreditation when the complainant has exhausted all of the institution's appeal procedures. NIC has a grievance procedure for employees at Policy 2.02.23 and a complaint process for students at Policy 5.16. Did any of the complainants submit their complaints to NIC, much less exhaust appeal procedures? If not, NWCCU is violating its own procedures by considering the complaints in its evaluation. NWCCU also requires a significant amount of detail and evidence for complaints that are submitted and has a timeline and a process for dealing with complaints. Were all of those requirements met? If not, NWCCU is violating its own accreditation process. Why? Is it because the president of the NWCCU, Ramaswamy, is friends with President McLennan and is upset that he was fired? Is it he is upset that NIC has a conservative board on the majority? Is it that Dr. Ramaswamy thinks that higher education needs to root out conservatives? These are more important, these are important questions that need to be answered. Another important question that needs to be answered is who are these people who are complaining to the NWCCU? Why do they want to put NIC's accreditation at risk instead of going through the grievance procedures outlined in the NIC policy manual? If they're afraid to express their concerns, they can submit them anonymously. Sounds to me that there are people here that want NIC to lose its accreditation if they don't get their way. That seems to be a consistent pattern. For example, Christie Wood and Ken Howard resigned when Pete Brochet wasn't appointed to Fall
Thank you. Rod Schobert, so you're here?
Yes, Rod Schobert, good evening, folks. Okay, one, two. What's that?
I'm concerned about two things. One, I want to ensure the safety of everybody here, and that we are all respectful, whether or not we agree with the people's opinion.
Yeah, we've been having people interrupt, and I'm the timekeeper, and I don't appreciate other people interfering with people's times.
Just a reminder, this is a professional meeting of the board, a business meeting.
Okay, and I'm going to say, after this meeting, like, one of the goals that I got is to treat everyone fairly, sir, and one of my technicalities here is your agenda item is not on the agenda. You put future, and everyone else is putting accreditation, but I'm going to interpret that as we don't have a future without accreditation. Is that fair to say?
Bingo.
Okay, okay, but in the future, we're going to try and be a little bit more stricter with that, but I'm glad you're here. Please give him his two minutes back, and thank you for making it down, so go ahead.
All right, thank you. So, wanted to briefly just review what definition of a conservative is, and then how that lines up with the actions that we've seen in recent times. Some of the words, conservative, prudent, cautious, custodian, guardian, one who preserves the majority on the board, and it's been reviewed tonight, at least two lawsuits, two presidents let go without cause, an attorney being paid more than one and a half times what has been traditional here, credit at risk, liability insurance, liability has gone up, and it may go up more, much more expensive, the credit rating down. If this college needs to build another building, and if debt financing is involved, it's going to cost more money. These folks have not acted from a conservative or guardian perspective. I attended the December meeting, gentleman next to me mentioned, a leader casts a vision to draw people to that vision. Personally, I don't think I've seen that. The human cost, it's been reviewed, communities all around the North Idaho, Bonner's Ferry, Silver Valley, St. Mary's, depended on this. Affordable education, many students, and I've talked to some myself, could not afford to go elsewhere. I've also spoken with several who were the first ones in their families to get a college education. One instructor mentioned, I thought this was kind of cool, he said when he went to school here, it helped show him what he could become, and I hope we can become a group that works together.
Thank you, sir.
Bill Green and Kessia Bergland, forgive me. Is there a Bill Green and a Kessia Bergland and a Presley Steele? If any of those names could make their way in. We're running on 30, 40 minutes. All right, thank you, welcome. And Bill, so Presley Steele or Randy Neal, you're all on deck. Come close to the microphone, and here we go. Thank you, please state your name and topic.
Hi, I'm Keisha Bergland, and I'm here to talk about accreditation. At first, I wanted to say, I thought it was kind of interesting how with the revised agenda, it said that, you know, it was at your discretion of who could speak or when. It seems like you followed order, but I just thought that was interesting, and I thought maybe in the future, you could have on your checklist first people to, you know, say if they're a student or faculty or just community members, and, you know, if you are going to pick and choose who you're going to let speak, let the students and the faculty speak first, because that's why we're here, right? They're kind of the bread and butter of the whole point of
Please be respectful and just listen.
But talking about accreditation, I've talked before, I'm an alumni, that's why it's important to me. it's important to me. I have two sisters that are currently students as well, and I think that it's really important that this issue gets resolved. I really want to thank both Teri Zimmerman and Brad Corkle for continuing to push, why is this not something that is really being addressed? Because you guys have shown that you want to reinstate a president that was wrongfully put on leave, and I really would ask that the other board members consider, why are you still here? Because it does not seem that you are putting the best interest of the students and faculty and the people that care about this college first. You've shown that by not responding to their votes of no confidence to you, so, as lots of other people have said, resign. There's no reason for you to be here if you don't care. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come to the microphone next. Please state your name and topic.
Presley Steele, accreditation. My name is Presley Steele, and I'm a student here at North Idaho College. I spoke at the last board meeting last month, and it feels as though nothing has changed. No progress has been made towards preserving our accreditation. The NWCCU gave us guidelines for what we should do to save accreditation. One of them was uncertainty among who's the chief executive officer, and because we currently have two presidents, and you have not followed that. We, as students, do not feel like our voices are being heard. We are having decisions made for us by people who don't even take classes here, and ignoring the perspective of the students and the votes of no confidence. And we have two of the board members texting and emailing people, asking them to sign up for public comment, because you need large numbers of conservatives here. I'm not here because anyone asked me to be here, I am here because I care about this Students are what this college is really about, and I'm urging the three trustees, Greg McKenzie, Todd Banducci, and Mike Waggoner, to please put your personal agendas aside and understand what we need as a college. We need to protect what makes North Idaho College great, and that is the ability to explore our interests and learn how to be a functioning adult. We can't let all of this go to waste. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come to the microphone.
Hi, my name's Bill Green. Thank you very much for you guys being here and allowing us to speak. And I want to thank you personally, each and every one, for your service, because I know it's a lot of work, a lot of time, and a lot of commitment. And I think that personally, each and every one of you, if I were to ask, we're all agreed that you want very much to save the college, to keep the college accredited, to keep it the wonderful opportunity that it is. And I've spoken, I think personally, with all of you, except Mr. Corkle, but I read so much about you, I think that I could probably read into it, that you're a very dedicated person, you're very talented, you bring a lot of expertise, and all of you bring so much expertise to this situation. And I think if you were to pool those talents, you'd find a solution that may not be obviously apparent right now, but you really could find it. I would encourage you to think about the talents and gifts that each one of you have. Look into your own heart and everybody else's heart there, and you know that there's an awful lot of good, there's an awful lot of sincerity, there's an awful lot of talent and effort that's gone into this, and I think that you could really make a big impact, if you could get that perspective of the talent and the gifts that each of you have. If you change perspectives, you change perceptions, and wherever the perceptions are, there's been all kinds of comments and back and forth, but in the end, there's a truth that's there in your hearts that you could find, and it can emerge. The young man who spoke here with the black curly hair with the accent, I was so impressed with him, because he was asking you to look beyond the appearance and look to the God part, the spiritual part, the invisible values and ideals that built this college and built this country. In the Constitutional Convention, when they had a big impasse, it was George Washington that got down on it and said to them, "Let's get on our knees and ask for guidance." And then they found.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Randy Neal and Kaylee Neal is on deck.
There's a quote by Abraham Lincoln that I would like to share with everyone that's here tonight. "We are not enemies but friends. We must not be enemies. Even though passion may strain, we mustn't let it break the bonds of our affection." That's an amazing quote by an amazing leader. And I would just like to inform the people in this room and the people who are watching this, that when I told that quote to Christie Wood, she told me to shut up. There is an air of hostility that has been in this college. I've been attending these trustee meetings for quite some time, and I could feel the negativity in the room so thick that you could cut it with a knife. So I decided to make a positive affirmation. This positive affirmation was responded by, to by an NIC professor with such hostility that she exploded out of her seat and assaulted a woman, and she confessed this to a police body cam. Enough is enough. If you're not gonna be part of the solution, please leave this college alone. Friends of NIC, more like enemies of NIC. I applaud the demeanor and the behavior of the board calling for everybody to come together tonight, President McKenzie, and I ask that, people have asked, why are you still here? Well, I can answer that question, because they were elected by the people. This is a representative board, a representative government, and that's the way it should be. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Kaylee Neal and Peter Miley on deck, and Jessica Miley on deck after that. Welcome, please speak into the mic. Maybe help her lower it down. That'll do. Welcome.
Thank you.
Please state your name.
My name is Kaylee Neal. I go to Discovery of Learning. I'm 14. I know you guys are getting a lot of negativity, so I'd like to thank you all for everything you've done with everyone saying, "Go leave the board, go." Well, I say, instead of leaving the board, let's make change. Instead of hating each other, let's actually make change. Let's instead, instead of saying, "Screw off," and stuff like that, let's try to work together to make this college a better place for the future and the youth, and fix the accreditation issue, who, like we all, should do as civil people. I'm talking to the people who are literally tackling each other after these board meetings.
Thank you. Peter Miley and Jessica Miley on deck.
Hello, my name is Peter Miley. I'm here to talk about accreditation. Hello, NIC board trustees. At the last board meeting, it was mentioned that we must bring the proverbial temperature down, and you are right, Dr. South, we must. But in effort to clarify our current circumstance, I would like to further expand upon your metaphor. You see, Dr. South and members of the board, the temperature usually doesn't go down and the water doesn't cease to boil until the stove actually gets turned off. However, as outlined by my recent, excuse me, as outlined by recent events in the show cause letter, the interim president is not the person with their hand on the dial that is capable of switching off the heat. No, in fact, Dr. South, you're the flame itself. The fact is this, by nature of being a problem listed on the letter, you cannot also be a solution. You also previously stated that accreditation is not rocket science, but it is still complex. And to be honest, the first half of that statement is totally correct. It is not rocket science. Matter of fact, the faculty assembly pretty easily made note of what needed to be done to save NIC, and those action items would very literally eliminate all risk of loss of accreditation. Now, members of the board, the paradox before you, that some of you manufactured, by the way, is as follows. It is impossible to maintain accreditation while also achieving whatever politically motivated goals you may have, or, to say it differently, and a bit louder for the people in the back, it is clear that the goal of keeping our college's accreditation and whatever agenda you all have is juxtaposed and cannot be achieved simultaneously. For one to succeed, the other must fail. Now, finally, if by sheer pressure, happenstance, and/or miracle, you decide to make the right decision starting here and now, at this board meeting, I give you the following suggestion: that you cease with the horrible attempts at obfuscation, because if I and many others wanted to spend our time scratching our heads as we search for something as obscure and ridiculous, the rhyme and reason to your actions beyond simple power and control, we would have gone to the public library, checked out a Where's Waldo book, and immediately turned to the.
Just for the record, we're at one hour public comment, so we're almost two pages down of four, and there are three and a half, so I intend to keep going unless trustees want to go to bed tonight. Okay, I don't see any votes to, please continue. Thank you. Please state your name and agenda item.
Jessica Miley, accreditation. I am a local here to North Idaho. I'm a graduate of Lakeland High School. I attended North Idaho College, received my associate's degree, transferred to Lewis Clark State College, and just recently graduated with my master's from Idaho State University. Or, sorry, from Idaho State University, yes. I am also a previous employee of North Idaho College. So NIC has a lot of effect on my life and has brought me to where I am today. I'm concerned with the accreditations and the steps moving forward. I've heard things about the decline of enrollment the past 10 years, and yes, while that is true, the entire nation is also seeing this. According to an article from Inside Higher Ed, "Community college enrollment has declined every year since 2010. Students under the age of 18 are the only group that has increased each year during that time period," end quote. This goes in line with what Dr. Steve Kurtz spoke about for the last meeting, with enrollment declining but dual enrollment growing. NIC is not out of the norm with this, but yet, with North Idaho STEM cutting ties, you have caused the one group that can grow your enrollment away. So I ask you, board members, what are you gonna do to fix accreditation? Every single time we are here, we say we're working on it, but yet, we're further away from it. I worked specifically with high school students, and just this past week, I was talking to a student, and she wants to come here to North Idaho College for the nursing program. And she looked at me, and literally tears are in her eyes because she says, "I don't know if I can go or not, because we don't know what is happening." She can't leave because of money, she needs to stay home, and she wants to stay local. So I ask you to please fix accreditation for her, for students like me, and for the rest of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Summer Bushnell, Ralph Shai, Beth Miller, those names, please come to the microphone. And again, please hold your applause so we can get to the next names. Sorry, I didn't call it on deck on this one. Is there Summer Bushnell, Ralph Shai, Beth Miller, Ralph W. Day? Any of those names, please come to the microphone. Please state your name.
Oh, my name is Ralph Shay.
Please, a little help with the microphone.
My name, my name is Ralph Shay. I started, restarted my education here at NIC in 1993. I got my first job through that program, and I am a dedicated believer in education. What I see happening here is not a good representation of the educational process. What I hope to see is that this board will pull together and start acting like a true Board of Trustees. I will be watching, this is my first trustee meeting, and I'm here because I care about this college. It is a, it is ingrained in me that I have been a part of this college through many years. Now I've been here 29 years, and I hope to see it in 20 years from now. If you don't act accordingly, it will affect our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I loved seeing a united born down in Boise. I'm one of those nerds that watched you guys live on the livestream, but thank you all for being down there. I really liked it, good job. I see progress being made. It may not be prognostic, everyone likes, but I see progress. I appreciate the prompt posting of letters from the accreditation body, because they are really hard to find. The trustees are here because the voters decided they were best. I don't want any of these trustees to resign. This seems like a good working group. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Beth Miller, Ralph W. Day. Please state your name and topic.
Hi, I'm Beth Miller, and I'm kind of changing it now to accreditation. And I am a recently retired RN, and I have worked with many fantastic NIC grad RNs over the years. But I can tell you, the ones that are in the program right now, they are shaken in their scrubs. They don't know what's going on, they don't know if their work so far is gonna amount to anything or not. So I really beg of you to do what you can to save not only the nursing program, but the rest of the college as well. Entire community is short of RNs. We can't afford to lose a program like NIC. The best way to ensure that the RN program continues is to make sure that the college is accredited. And for me, anyway, one of the best things you could do to help me understand what's going on is to just be honest with the community. Why are so many things secret? Why was Dr. Swain removed? Why is Dr. Smith in here now?
South.
South, I'm sorry. What is your endgame? What are you trying to, what's your vision for the college? I don't know that. I don't know if the rest of the community does or not, but when you don't know, when you don't tell us, it leads to people guessing and coming up with all kinds of theories that are probably nowhere near true, but we don't know. We could get some direction from you guys. What is up? What's really going on? That would be great. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Ralph W. Day, and on deck is Eric Klinkhammer.
Hello, I'm Ralph W. Day. I'm here to discuss accreditation. I worked on this campus with at-risk students for over five years, and during that time, I got to know a lot of the staff and faculty, and I'll tell you, they are stellar, stellar people, because they went above and beyond any expectation to support the students that I was here to help. And I am really disappointed in the fact that accreditation is up and in danger. I just can't understand why all these personal agendas are now coming into focus, and what are you, what are you trying to accomplish? You are jeopardizing the future of these students, not only here now, but the future students, as other people have talked about, and also the support and for the community. Okay? I'm really disappointed with that. NIC has worked hard to meet the needs of the community, opening different schools, allowing more students to come in here, and now that's being jeopardized, and that's on you guys, because you're the ones who are jeopardizing the future of this community, and I am very appalled. Fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, thank you. And Samuel Tenney and Brian McNamee, thank you and welcome. State your name, go to the microphone.
Eric Klinkammer, and I'm here to talk about accreditation. I voted for this board, fully understanding that the institutions that control accreditation are hostile to the board, not, as some may claim, for any purported allegation or cause, but because of who they are and what they believe, I am under no illusion that any actual actions taken will matter, other than complete submission. I would encourage the board, or the subset that was elected following Honest Campaigns, to stay the course. I support this board regardless of the outcome. Frankly, I don't think anyone cares about Swain or accreditation or whatever else those people were whining about. If they did, they would work with the elected board. They don't. They care about power. As a previous commenter pointed out, they're driven by hate, hatred of you, of us, the voters, and of God. I would rather this college lose accreditation than have it continue to be a sink for my tax dollars dedicated to the promotion of ideologies and worldviews opposed to the voter base and the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you. Samuel, please come to the microphone. On deck, Brian McNamee.
Macnamee, but thank you.
Macnamee, welcome. State your full name, sorry, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Brian Macnamee. I thought I was signing up just for a signup sheet, but it turns out that I'm up here to talk, so, one thing that maybe hasn't been totally touched on tonight is, an awful lot of the number of the students don't have the wherewithal to basically come to school here and have it, have it fall apart. They just can't financially tolerate that. And when I've talked to a few of them who are thinking of applying specifically to some of the nursing and rad tech jobs, they really can't take the risk, and so they're gonna go and look elsewhere. And at least the hospital in and of itself, we need more nurses, we need more x-ray techs, we need more scrub techs, and if the institution were to go under, it would really negatively affect the community. affect the community and frankly, the kids. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there a Samuel Tenney still around? And a Marcus Davis? And a C.C. Or a Della Munich? Anyone, please come to the microphone with those names. Going down, Terry Tritton? All right, we'll just keep going. Randy, Randy Stolli? I think people are coming in. Laddie Briggs, Biggs? Hello. Please state your name and topic.
Yes, I'm Della Munich.
Please step closer.
Oh, it needs to be shorter. I'm Della Munich. I'm a longtime resident of Coeur d'Alene. I've lived here most of my life. I've lived often in Seattle area, so I'm sure you all know what my politics are. I have to state my differences with what's going on right now with the college, North Idaho College. I was once married to an incredible professor, teacher, that taught here. He's, he's gone now. And I think in a sense I'm speaking for him because this was his lifeblood. And I see, I am so disappointed with what's going on, and I see that my disappointment is here. Are you going to work? Are you going to give us some answers? There's something that doesn't make sense to me, something that doesn't fit. Why, why is this so difficult to fix? What is the problem? What is going on? Is there something you're not telling us? Is there something you want to change with this college? Is there, there's something that makes me feel very uneasy? And I'm sure I'm not alone. You've seen and heard many people that have talked this evening. But at any rate, I'm speaking for somebody that is deceased. He taught here, and his name was Dale Tritton. And my son, I think, is next to speak also. But anyway, please come up with some answers. Please, please, or resign. Please. Thank you.
Is there a Samuel Tenney, Marcus Davis? Please state your name and topic.
My name's Terry Tritton. Not a public speaker at all, but this is very important to me. I grew up just a block away from here, still live in that home. Watched NIC grow all my life in a positive way. That was my mother up before me. My dad was head of the math department here, many years retired, and I believe helped this school grow. And, and it, this school also, I went to a vocation here. This school gave me my occupation in life. And it just means so much from the heart, and to see it just in a short period of time being flushed down the toilet, and I believe by three representatives here. I just can't believe what's going on. Accreditation, how did that get her to risk? And like, like she said, what's going on? Why can't we fix this? There's, there's students that, that need this. And I just, if there is no resignation, then please get together and do something. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Samuel Tenney, Marcus Davis, going to Randy, Randy Stolli, and Laddie Biggs. Any of those names? Please state your name and topic.
For the record, it's Randy Stolz, sir. S.T.O.L.Z.
Thanks.
And I rise to speak to the current education crisis, excuse me, accreditation crisis, a crisis precipitated, I believe, by three members of this board. I drove an hour and a half to get here because this institution means a lot to me, and it's meant a lot over the years to members of my family. I'm a proud Bronco from the Boise State University class of 1989, but my curriculum vitae also includes Georgetown University, Gonzaga University, Mount Angel Seminary, and, yes, folks, North Idaho College. I remember funding battles in the 80s where programs were endangered at North Idaho College and the University of Idaho, but the whole institution was never endangered. My NIC credits would not have transferred without accreditation. My ex-sister-in-law graduated from the nursing program here. Her daughter is currently enrolled in the nursing program here. One of my brothers took classes here. It is inexplicable to me why three board members are driving this school's bus off a cliff. This institution serves traditional students here, either to learn a trade or to earn academic credits to transfer elsewhere. Those credits, in order to transfer, must be from an accredited institution. We've heard how it serves marginalized Head Start kids here. Adults are here remediating. Thank you, sir.
Laddie Biggs, Tim Plas.
I'm Larry Briggs.
Larry Briggs.
I'm here to talk about accreditation.
Thank you.
When I retired from NIC, I had over 20 years of experience with NWCCU accreditation. That included serving as a member of evaluation teams for colleges and universities, both public and private, large and small, across the Northwest. What has happened at NIC is unlike anything I have ever seen. In July 2020, after a comprehensive evaluation of NIC's ability to fulfill its mission, NWCCU reaffirmed the college's accreditation and commended its operation in multiple areas. Today, NIC must prove if it can even meet basic eligibility requirements for accreditation. The college mission has been reduced to one word: survive. Curing past open meeting violations and conducting board trainings are not meaningful evidence of compliance with NWCCU standards. Mr. McKenzie, Mr. Banducci, Mr. Wagner, although you reject the call from people like me to immediately and fully reinstate Nick Swain as the sole president of NIC as just the first step to give the college a fighting chance to recover its good standing with NWCCU, I implore you to consider this. The people who established a college in Coeur d'Alene 90 years ago and the subsequent generations that built NIC into a force for good throughout the region are owed gratitude, not a loss of accreditation. Their legacy is to build opportunity, prosperity, and collaboration. Will your legacy be to destroy that promise? Thank you.
Tim Plas. Again, Samuel Tenney, Marcus Davis, if they'd make their way to the microphone, if they're still around. Welcome, state your name.
Yeah, I'm Tim Plas. I'm from the Rathdrom area. I'm going to speak about accreditation or the issues with it. I wanted to welcome President South. I knew you were great when I read about you, that you were administrator at College of the Siskus, my alma mater, Northern California by Mount Chastis. I've had six children attend NIC, and five of them get their associate degree here. I wanted everyone to know that I fully support the board that we elected. I support what you're doing and the efforts to restore or to stabilize accreditation status. Citizens of Cootney County voted for all five of you, and you are the legitimate board. And the board that was here last summer, the three appointed ones, were illegitimate. And I want this straightened out, and I believe you're doing it. The elected board should be investigating what those trustees did, those appointed trustees did last summer. I want the illegal hiring of President Swain investigated. That there was things that weren't right about that. There's illegal real estate deals that should be investigated. I, I want the best for NIC, and I want you to restore it to good standing and put that last summer to rest. I'm disappointed in the NIC staff that they did a no confidence. I don't know why you're shooting yourselves in the foot. This is, is just insanity that you don't just be quiet and let the board do their job. Thank you.
Okay, is there an Alan Gullub? Again, please hold your applause or if you support, either way. Let's get through this list.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Please state your name and topic.
Yes, my name is Alan Gullub, and it's accreditation. You know, I do graphic art using AI on my phone. In five years, I'll be able to write a paper using AI on Socrates, Plato, and Aristotle, give the criteria of 10,000 words, and have it done in 10 minutes. It means that college is not going to be the same as it is now. It might have been here for 90 years, but AI is going to change everything. And as a person that helped select Michael Burke as, years ago, on the presidential committee, I say we have five great people here, and I know you will work together to get the job done. Thank you.
Thank you. Wade Spiker, please. And Diana Sheridan, and a Carol L. Poetsman, I don't know, help me out. State your name and topic.
My name is Wade Spiker. Accreditation. I just hope everybody out here understands the education process you're witnessing right now, because that's what this is. When you think about it, the people voted. They voted for this board. That was our vote, whether you're a student, teacher, taxpayer, whatever. I'm a graduate from a community college in 1978, associate's degree, retired, very successful. We voted. These are the people. Sadly, they got in, the attacks started, the political hit job. To do what? Discredit. I've been around a long time. I flew around for a corporation for years, speaking. I've seen it all. This has been nothing but an attack for political purposes. The whole concept of this college is for one reason and one reason only of any community college. Get in education and become a successful product of civilization in your community. Get a job. That's what this is about. We're here to do one thing and one thing only: educate students from 18 years old to 65 or 75. I don't care how old you are, that is the job of this college, is not to sit here and worry about the political, going back and forth, "I don't like this person, I don't want this." And it all started after we, the people, voted. Stand with this board.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Diana Sheridan.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Diana Sheridan, resident of CDA. And my comments, I just wanted to address to the board and to Dr. South. First of all, thank you. Thank you for being willing to step into a situation that was less than fun and games, and to invite and bring other people that you trusted, that have the education, the background, and the experience to be able to come into this situation and have a very successful outcome. So thank you to you and to every one of those members of the staff now that have come on board with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol L. Poetsman, and a Tom Kane? We're going to have to get a typewriter. A Tom Torgerson?
Tom Torgerson, accreditation. I was born and raised downtown on Front in 1966. I was a student senator here. You guys have heard my pitch before. I'm not going to belabor a prior comment about the money that three of you have cost the taxpayers of this county, but I will add these. The additional $3 to $4 million a year, because I was a board member for the North Idaho College Foundation, those donations have been reduced by that much. And I'll also add this. ICRAMP quit our insurance that was $380,000 a year, and now it's 1.4 million. That's a million dollars a year to me and them because of you. This is asinine. I've asked you one question, and Dr. Swain needs to get reappointed, reinstated. You guys, you can smile all you want, Todd. You guys knew that his contract was four to one instead of three to two to get rid of him, and by your little smart, I will give you that, you were able to just put him on leave without pay at a three to two vote. Good job. Now you cost us paying two presidents, let alone during December, we paid three with Savali in there. I am so sick and tired of you guys not having the guts to say what your end game is. That was my term, and I'm going to start a hashtag on Twitter, and I'm going to get it on there, because you guys don't have the balls to say what you want, and I'm sick of it. You're pitiful.
Thank you, sir. Ray Ritz. And a Rick Curr. Ray Ritz and a Rick Curr, going back to last call for Samuel Tenney, Marcus Davis, Carol Poetsman, Tom Kane. Any of those names, please make your way to the microphone.
My name's Raymond Ritz, and I've watched this go on, and this is going to be about accreditation and bond rating that we've all heard about in the press, and what Mick Arman had mentioned about being downgraded by Moody's. And, you know, that is a serious issue, but I've noticed the loss rate that Moody's is always late to the party when a major company is going bankrupt, and the elite investors always get the heads up before, and the average investor is always getting shafted along the way, three ways left to Sunday. But, you know, the knives have been out a long time since I've been paying attention. And when Meducci got elected, before he got elected, the press and many of the liberals were really trying to hang him all along the way. You know, I was sort of on the sideline, just watching this, and I thought, "That was unfair." And then the press, I would consider very unstable and one-sided. And if you go back in the old days, you'd probably call that, you know, journalism. So, you know, what we have here is we have an elite group of people in this town that don't like what the taxpayers have put on board, and they should respect that, but they do not. You know, you have the governor, you have the education board in Boise, you had John Getty, and Whitmire, and the press, and the Human Rights Commission, and Christie Wood, they were all, they all had the knives out, period. They were busy working on this behind the scenes. This is all going to come out eventually, and nothing's going to change that. And, you know, God has a unique way of bringing things out for people that are doing this. It may take a while, but the truth will bear out. Thank you. Were your service.
Thank you, sir. Rick Courier, and a Howard Coons. If you've signed up for public comment and you haven't spoke yet, please make your way to the microphone. Please state your name and topic.
My name's Howard Coons. We've listened to a lot of comments tonight. Very separate, two different sides. separate, two different sides. And if NIC was run democratically, every decision that was made would be based on how many people are for this side or how many people are for that side. But that's not the way NIC is run. We've got elections. And once the people are elected, they're supposed to run the thing. So I really don't know why all of these people keep coming. Let's let them do the job. They've been elected. They've been elected. Let them do the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Courier, Kason, Ken, Sandy, Omorin, Wally, Allen. Please make your way to the microphone. Please state your name and topic.
Rick Curry. I'm a lifetime resident of Cooney County. And I keep asking myself why some transplants want to destroy an institution that has done so much to so many in our community. And the people that live here, both new and old. I wish that someone would explain to me why a board that professes to be fiscal conservatives want to destroy a facility that has saved many residents of Idaho thousands of dollars. NIC is a great institution to start your, your college career. It has a small town atmosphere, so there is not a lot of culture shock that sometimes goes along with the newer, larger institutions. It offers quality education at a quality, at a facility that is relatively close for those, those students who sometime need a shoulder to lean on in that transition. There is a community that makes it quite easy to become welcoming in this community and a staff that cares about the well-being of the students and so, and so much more. And all that is done at a relatively small rate, saving families thousands of dollars. I remember when I started at NIJC, when I graduated from high school, I was not ready for college. Although my parents encouraged it, I wasn't. Thanks to the US Army, two years later, I was ready. I remember my first semester at NIC, NIJC and the many students from North Idaho that were transitioning from the comfort of family to show we say.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming. Please step forward and state your name and topic.
I'm Sandy Emerson. Topic is accreditation. And I'm finding that at my advanced age, I can't see to read my notes. So I'm just gonna say a few things that I think are important. One of the, I ran the Coeur d'Alene Chamber of Commerce for six years in the 80s. We were trying to recruit businesses to keep people who would go off to college or get trained, wanted to come back to Coeur d'Alene to live and work, would have a way to do that. We tried to keep some of our businesses in good health because interest rates had gone to 20%, 18%. If you remember, those of you remember, Afghanistan was overrun by the Russians, some parallels. People were kind of feeling down. We worked really, really hard to recruit businesses and keep the business we had. We had business people from the telephone company, from Forest Industries working with us, Frank Henderson was state Senator, Mayor. All of these people worked really hard. The best tool we had to recruit and keep businesses was North Idaho College. They were nimble. They could create jobs, curriculums, work with people who were looking at possibly relocating here. They were keeping jobs that were here viable. This is the place that made all that happen back then. It hurts really everyone who was associated with it back then to see it kind of on its knees now. The reputation has been suffering and we need a stronger commitment by the board to work together if that's gotta happen or to separate if they don't have the right values in this particular case. I, my three kids went to NIC. My dad was on the Board of Trustees. We had...
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Kason and I'm a student at NIC College and, thank you. And I just wanted to talk about accreditation. Thank you for staying so long, too. And sorry, I have my backpack on. I was studying for midterms, but I made it. So I wanted to just say that I've been listening to interim President South since he said that a letter of show cause was going to be an improbability and something that if it were to happen, we can fix. And unfortunately, it's here and it has arrived and now it needs to be fixed. I've been listening and researching and I read the letter that went down what was recommended to do. And it's, let me pull it out. It says that the ongoing actions of the NIC Board continue to place the institution at risk for viability, including multiple no confidence resolutions from students and staff. And I just wanted to say that in reading some of the letters, it seems like this has happened before. In one of the letters sent by the NWCCU in April, they gave a warning of sanction just for not responding to that report of, of no confidence. So I just wanted to urge the board to listen and to respond if they can and to go down the list that says that frequent changes in leadership are a problem and all of these things. I just wanted to urge the board that there's a lot on the line and I'm worried for myself and for my friends and for my teachers and my classes. And I just wanna say and urge to do the right thing tonight and think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone, one, who you have signed up for public comment and you haven't been called, please come to the microphone. Please state your name and topic.
I'm Wally Adams and I've had a long and rewarding relationship with North Idaho College as has our family. And I'm talking about the accreditation problem. And I couldn't sleep and I, I got up in the middle of the night and wrote down some notes and here they are. North Idaho College has been a positive contributor to our community since 1933. It has grown from a community junior college to a regional asset and beyond. Local, effective, civic-minded management has enabled NIJC, now NIC, to answer the call, not just as a less expensive stepping stone to higher education, but to area business needs, both vocational and academic. The superb progress NIC has enjoyed for the last 90 years is now being challenged by three members of the Board of Trustees, whose motives are vague and disruptive. However, these three members have one last chance to serve the college and the community. Resign. It would be the right thing for you to do and may well be the only path to continued accreditation. Thanks.
Thank you. Congratulations, everyone. We had a record 49 public commenters for tonight. And we are moving to celebrating success, student journey. Peggy Bradford, if you would. And before we head there, let's take a five-minute recess. Let's make it 10. Thank you, everyone. And we'll reconvene at 8:15.
If everyone can start making their way back to their seats, this is a two-minute call.
Is that the right tie? No. I can't believe I did that. Good, I was having a hard time. Thank you.
Okay. Welcome, everyone, we're reconvening at 8:29 PM, it's getting late, but it is important. If Peggy Bradford could please start addressing, and if you don't have a seat in this room, and you're not videotaping or some special status, we need you to be out, thank you.
I'd like to invite you to start on a journey with us, student journey. Dean Tammy Heft, Dean Alex Harris, and Dean Gail Ballard will talk to you about what it's like to be a student from the beginning, through the process here at NIC. And with a focus on the mission, it says, "North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the northern Idaho community. It serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning." So please join us in welcoming them.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair McKenzie, trustees, President South, faculty, staff, students, and community. As Dr. Bradford mentioned, my name is Tammy Haft. I have been an employee at North Idaho College since 1990. And I'm also an alum. Currently, I serve as the Dean of Enrollment Services and Director of Admissions. Enrollment Services is a team of 23. Offices include recruitment, Cardinal Central, admissions, registrar, and financial aid. Tonight, I want to share with you the good work that is done in each of these areas to support students through their educational journey. The first is recruitment. North Idaho College has two full-time enrollment coordinators who bring 36 years of higher education to the table. Their offices are located in the DeArmen Building, which is also home to Lewis Clark State College and the University of Idaho Enrollment Services. The enrollment coordinators are often the first point of contact for individuals who are considering attending North Idaho College. Through their travels, they actively recruit throughout Idaho, Western Montana, and Eastern Washington. Engagements include high school visits, college fairs, Idaho junior and senior tours, athletic and community events. They are in regular communication with prospects from across the US and other countries, providing them with information about NIC's programs and guiding them through the enrollment process. Annually, they provide more than 40 group tours to K-12 visitors from the Pacific Northwest. Weekly, they guide campus tours and serve approximately 750 individuals a year. Through the NIC Connect program, enrollment coordinators engage with students and counselors in Region 1 high schools multiple times throughout the year. Each visit focuses on a different enrollment process. They help students with program discovery, applying for admission, financial aid, and scholarships, and completing placement assessments, and then provide them with advising and registration support, allowing students to complete their enrollment while they are in their high schools. Cardinal Central is a team of six, including five alums that bring 36 years of higher education experience to the table. Located in Lee Kildale Hall, Cardinal Central is NIC's one-stop enrollment center. The center is often a first point of contact for anyone wanting to attend, and they continue to support students throughout their time at NIC. The knowledgeable team provides excellent customer service. They are able to answer questions about admissions, residency, financial aid, scholarships, placement assessments, programs, transcripts, class schedules, billing, registration, graduation, enrollment policies and procedures, and much more. The center has several computer stations that students are able to use to apply for admission and financial aid. The team is always ready to assist and happy to teach students how to navigate their MYNIC accounts. Team members regularly help students identify documents that are needed to complete their files and assist them with ordering transcripts. Cardinal Central is home to student and employee ID cards, they issue several thousand a year. To support the one-stop model, team members regularly engage with admissions, registrar's office, dual credit, student finance, advising and career services, financial aid, and instructional division offices to ensure they have the information needed to answer questions that come their way. Cardinal Central's days are filled serving students, staff, faculty, and the community. Admissions is located in Lee Kildale Hall. It's a team of four, which includes three alums and brings 71 years of higher education experience to the table. The team processes admission applications and materials and sends acceptance letters to students. They remain engaged with students throughout the application cycle, providing them with updates on steps they need to take to meet with an advisor and enroll in classes. The team also processes and evaluates student program applications for limited and selective programs in health professions and nursing and career technical education divisions. They collaborate with staff and faculty in the special programs, ensuring files are updated as soon as decisions are made and that students are made aware of their acceptance to the program. The office evaluates all incoming transfer coursework from the military, colleges, and universities. They determine course equivalencies and award credits that students are able to use to meet NIC certificate and degree requirements. Through their MYNIC account, students are able to quickly see how the transfer courses apply to their programs of study at NIC. Finally, the team supports international students, ensuring they are in good standing with US Immigrations and Customs and are able to complete their studies at NIC. Financial Aid, also located in Kildale Hall, is a team of five, four of them alums, and bring 59 years of higher education experience to the table. One of the primary goals of the Financial Aid Office is educating students. One of the primary goals of the financial aid office is educating students through presentations and first-year experience classes, TRIO scholarship workshops, NIC high school events, cardinal convocation and new student orientation. Students learn the difference between Pell Grants and student loans, work-study and scholarships, and the importance of minimizing debt. The financial aid team offers FAFSA completion events in Region 1 high schools. These evening events held October through February support students and parents who need help applying for federal financial aid, regardless of the college or university the student will choose to attend. This year, the team has completed 25 visits. On average, $10 million in aid is awarded annually to students so they are able to attend. Eighty-six percent of NIC's student population receives some type of support from federal, state, institutional, community-based, or nationwide sources. The office manages the work-study program and facilitates the hiring of approximately 130 part-time student employees each academic year. This program provides students with opportunities for professional development and career exploration while pursuing their educational goals. $2,400 is the average award participants receive during an academic year. The program also provides student employees to 31 nonprofit partners on and off campus and the Follette Bookstore and Setex of Food Services, which are two on-campus for-profit partners. The registrar's office, also located in Lee Kildale Hall, is a team of five, which includes three alums and brings 66 years of experience to the table. The team ensures students know what classes they need to complete certificates and degrees through the work they do to publish the NIC catalog and maintain the degree audit system. They also ensure students have access to their degree audit through their My NIC account. The office supports on- and off-campus registration activities. This year, they have hosted registration pop-up events across campus that allow students to drop in and get the support they need to register for classes. They have collaborated with advising and student success, career technical education, and the Cardinal Learning Commons to support continuing student registration events for varsity student athletes, first-year experience, and trade and industry students. And they have worked with the dual credit office to help register students in the high schools that are participating in our dual credit program. To ensure student athletes are able to participate in varsity sports programs, the office certifies their eligibility with the National Junior College Athletic Association or the Northwest Athletic Conference. The office continues to monitor the students' academic progress to ensure they remain in good standing and are able to continue participating in their sport. The office evaluates graduation applications and communicates with students to ensure they know they are on track to graduate or need to meet with their advisor to make schedule changes. At the end of each term, certificates and degrees are conferred, allowing students to obtain employment. The team is also responsible for processing outgoing transcript requests, ensuring students are able to continue their studies at colleges and universities or meet employer requirements. I would now like to introduce Alex Harris, interim Dean of Enrollment Students, who will share how student support services support students.
Thanks, Tammy. Chair McKenzie, board members, Dr. South, community colleagues, I appreciate the time that you have given me to be able to tell the story of what we do here at NIC and the things that I have become passionate about here at NIC in my 20 years of experience and around three years as a student also. So I'm currently the interim dean of students, have been that since January '22, and I'm also the director of Title IX Conduct and Security. So the programs and initiatives within the areas that report through me and student services really are wraparound services for when students get here and they experience life, and life experiences them, and they either have problems or there are barriers. And our job throughout all our departments under the Dean of Students office is to address those barriers, to remove them, to help them work through that. And some of our offices, or all of our offices, include security, our student resource officer from Corley PD, disability support services, therapeutic counseling, health promotion, student development, children's center, residence life, recreation, and outdoor pursuits. So our primary areas of focus within the area are student conduct, federal compliance, which includes compliance with Title IX, BALA, Violence Against Women Act, CLARY Act, American Disability Act, and Alcohol and Other Drug Prevention Education Act. Other things that fall within us are student development and engagement, which would be ASNIC, student events, student leadership, civic engagement opportunities, recreational opportunities, and clubs and organizations. Initiatives that fall under our roof is campus security dispatch, cardinal peer advocate program, health promotion, our critical incident response team, emergency funds program, book voucher program, virtual care mental health program, our care reporting system, food pantry, victims advocate with Safe Passage, Region 1 Top Scholar Program, Green Dot Violence Prevention, mental health first aid, and then those things we do under safety, our campus security reporting, and our safe campus threat assessment team. A little bit more in-depth on some of those areas. Our residence life, our residence hall has 198 beds and 54 suites. I won't read all these things for you, but we employ seven student resident assistants, RAs, who go through a rigorous process to become a student leader on our campus, and we depend on them to help run the residence hall. This last fall semester, we were at 100% occupancy, which isn't a surprise with, given the local economy and housing costs. Spring semester, we always go down a little bit, so we were down to 90%. A few years ago, we started an intentional initiative to get more student athletes into the residence hall, and we are now averaging in the last two years about 50 student athletes per semester. This semester, Idaho residents, 42%, out-of-state residents, 58%. And we started last year piloting a program for students in summer academic programs, which was highly successful, so we're expanding that this summer. Also, given the housing problems in the area, if a student wants to be in class year-round, they can now live in the residence hall. Student Wellness and Recreation Center. We have our intramural sports and tournaments, dodgeball, flag football, volleyball, basketball, or anything else student groups want to do. We offer different fitness classes for students per week through the fall and spring, free weights, cardio, indoor track gym, climbing wall classrooms. And I'd like to share this data that we were able to get a few weeks ago, and that's the first week of Fall '22. We had 1,528 students visit the facility compared to 611 during the fall of 2021. Our staff has been working really hard to adjust hours to do some very innovative programming to make that happen. So we have more work to do, but it's exciting what's going on in our rec center.
If I made those hours adjustment, it was in collaboration with ASNIC, right?
Absolutely. ASIC did a survey of students, and then our rec center coordinator worked with them and worked with the stats that they had about when our students were using it, and we're able to expand those hours with some additional funds that we found and we're still working. As we've seen semester by semester, depending on who our students are, the time changes, so we continue to adjust that. Outdoor Pursuits. The best photographed program on campus offers everything from river rafting to mountain climbing to skiing. They also offer a great service in their rentals to students and community. There's often financial barriers to students to be able to have gear to ski or to hike or to climb or to raft, and we're able to provide that equipment and training to get them out doing the things they love. They also manage the climbing wall in our Student Wellness and Recreation Center, which gets quite a bit of usage and is really a showcase in the building. Student Leadership and Development. Through ASNIC, we have our Student Events Board, a group of students that puts on events and activities you, the board, often hear about in their reports, offer opportunities for students to network, to be in an environment with other students on campus or off, and it provides that opportunity to create those social networks, not online social networks, those in-person social networks that we know help students succeed. Student Clubs, which you may be aware of, often ebb and flow in how many we have. Happy to report, we have 27 clubs this semester, which is far more than we've had probably in the last six years. COVID, we took a hit on those, but we have some very active clubs through ASNIC. As you all know, associate students in North Idaho College, they are a student government. They are also our representative for our students in shared governance, hence the report you'll be hearing from the ASIC president at each board meeting. And they also are involved on our committees around campus, which is a large list of those committees. I will say that, just selfishly, their involvement on the campus safety committee, when we were able to put together a group of students to identify problems and issues that they saw on campus, maybe with physical spaces, and then also answer survey questions, led to a lot of great changes we made within security over the past three years. The Children's Center, the only nationally accredited childcare program in North Idaho, sets the standard for quality for childcare. It also serves as an instructional lab school for child development, psychology, nursing, and also for U of I and LCSC students. So not only is it a classroom for kiddos that attend, but also for our college students. Currently serves 51 childrens, ages zero to five, 45 families, 26 student parents. One of the programs they implemented, I think six years ago now, is what they call a STAR program, which is available to all student parents whose children are in the Children's Center, and if they complete 90% or plus of their credits and have over a 3.0 GPA, we pay their childcare scholarships for their success as parents. Those students in those programs are averaging a 3.68 GPA, which, if you think about it, they're parents. They're dealing with life, and their kids, and work, and they're getting through at a high success rate, so we're very proud of that. They also work within the community with many different groups, like United Way, Safe Start, and many others. Disability Support Services, one of those that are required through the Americans Disabilities Act, they offer students accommodations for things that may get in the way of their education, whether it's in the classroom or testing or studying. Those students in the college level, different than K-12, need to identify themselves to disability support. They work on an individualized plan on what they will do and what they need, and it is often an aha moment when students discover that disability support services is there to help them. Therapeutic Counseling. So currently, we have one counselor on campus. As you can see, the reasons are the same reasons that many in the community go to counselors. I often say, "We are a reflection of our community as a community college. What we see, what you see in your neighbors and your neighborhood, we see in our students." And so we try our best to address those issues with our counselor. Health Promotion. After we did not have health services anymore, we did keep health promotion within the realm of the Director of Disability Support Services, Health and Counseling. And what she does is work with many different areas around campus to make sure we promote healthy lifestyles, which we know leads to higher academic quality. And that is my part. I will introduce Gail Ballard.
Thank you, Alex. Greetings, Chair McKenzie, trustees, President South, students, community members, and visitors from near and far. My name is Gail Ballard, and I am serving as our interim Associate Dean of Instruction, Academic Support. On the slide in front of you, below staffing, you may notice the word volunteers. This is the term that NIC uses to describe instructors, advisors, and counselors in the high schools whom are affiliated with our dual credit program. And tonight, I will be sharing with you the good work that is being done to support students throughout their educational journey. The first academic support program I'd like to introduce you to is TRIO. TRIO serves over 160 students each academic year. Okay. TRIO is a federally funded program.
Hi, can everyone hear me? Okay. Hi, my name is Sean Collins. I'm an academic advisor in the TRIO program, so I'm happy to talk about the TRIO program. We're a federally funded program, so we support students, 160 students roughly every year, and our job is to help them get to their bachelor's degree. We're with the student their whole life of their program here at North Idaho College, so whenever they start, we stay with them, which is a little bit different than advising's model. We have a few qualifications to join. They need to be first generation, they need to be headed for a bachelor's degree. Typically, either first gen have a disability they're dealing with or coming from a low-income background to join our program. Those are all federal guidelines we follow. I don't have a presentation in front of me, so I'm just kind of running through it in my head right now.
Doing great.
But yeah, our success rate with our students is great. I don't want to say that we're better than the rest of the NIC students, but our students perform at much higher retention and graduation rates. So anyway, that's TRIO. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Moving on to our Adult Education Center and Job Corps. Adult Education is a program designed for individuals 16 years of age and older who want assistance to prepare for the GED test. We also serve adults who have graduated but still have a desire to upgrade their skills. Tuition is free and learning materials are provided. Approximately 150 students per year earn their GED at NIC. You may notice the picture on the right is actually a video link, but to preserve time, I'm not going to play it. I encourage you all to hear her story at a later time.
May I just mention something here, Gail? Of all the graduations, I always find they're all wonderful, but it's been said, "The measure of a person is not that person's position in life, but what they overcame to achieve it." And the stories in those graduations, when they complete their GED, are so heartwarming. I highly encourage all of you, if you have a chance to attend one of those graduations.
Thank you, Dr. South, and we look forward to celebrating ours towards the beginning of May. Center for New Directions is an incredible resource on campus for students. The CND, as we call it, serves single parents, displaced homemakers, and career pioneers. Career pioneers, meaning someone entering into a career traditionally held by the opposite gender. Through the CND, students and prospective students get help with FAFSA, scholarship applications, study management skills, resume and cover letter writing, and job applications. But perhaps the most important and unique aspect of this department, the CND, they are there to offer support when students face personal life issues so they can be successful academically. Our Center for New Directions serves over 100 individuals each semester. I was going to have the career pioneer in front of you share a bit of her experience. I will press go, but if there's no volume, we'll go forward from there. Okay. I do have an update. This was filmed about a couple of years ago, and she is now a proud alumnus of NIC. Way to go. Way to go. NIC has a collaborative professional staff and faculty advisor model for NIC's degree-seeking students at our Coeur d'Alene campus, Parker Technical Education Center, and Sandpoint campus. Advisors meet with students individually and in group settings and provide classroom presentations throughout the year. Professional advisors are members of the National Academic Advising Association that guides best practices for college advising, connects advising professionals to student success research and scholarly articles, and gives our advisors opportunities to contribute to the field of college advising. Academic advising at NIC provides holistic support to prospective and current students, taking the "we advise, you decide" approach to program exploration and academic planning. Advisors partner with students to reach their academic and career goals while encouraging them to take ownership of their educational experience. Advisors bridge student services and instruction to promote student success outcomes, such as retention, completion, transfer, and securing desired employment. Advisors connect students with essential resources on and off campus to aid in their academic and personal success. On the right side of the slide, you will notice Career Services. Career Services is staffed by one professional career counselor at this time. I'm going to share a quote from one of the 1,623 individuals served in 2022. The individual says, "Thank you for hosting the Career Goals Workshop. I gained a good deal of helpful information about the best careers for my interest. I learned that a career in finance would probably best suit my interests, but I'm not sure what my next steps will be to get there. I am homeschooled and going into 11th grade this fall. I'm considering dual enrollment to get some of my college classes out of the way, but I would like some guidance as to the courses I should take first to pursue a career in finance." Next up is American Indian Student Support. The American Indian Student Support Center is staffed by the American Indian Student Advisor, who provides academic advising, club and alliance advising, and additional supports designed to promote student success and a sense of belonging while honoring the sovereignty of the Coeur d'Alene tribe for the Nine Point Agreement, as well as serving students with other tribal affiliations in the region, such as Calville, Confederated, Eastern Shoshone, Flathead, Kalispel, Kootenay, Nez Perce, Northwestern Shoshone, Ponderay, Shoshone Manic, Shoshone Paiute, Spokane, Umatilla, and Yakima. Many of you may be familiar with our Veteran Military and Family Services. I'd like to share a comment from one of our students about their experience. "The Veterans Resource Center has been a big help during my time at North Idaho College. The employees at the Veterans Office have been great and helped navigate the college's systems, advising, and preparing for transfer to a university. It is much easier for veterans, especially as we leave the service, to interact with other vets. In addition, it is great to have someone helping who has a shared life experience that is hard for us to find in a classroom where I am typically the oldest student and do not relate to other students as well. The center has also been a great place to sit and do homework without the distractions of everything else. Other vets have typically taken many of the same courses, and it is great to have help from fellow vets you meet in the center. If it were not for the Veterans Resource Center, I would probably never be on campus aside from entering and leaving the classroom and testing centers." Another student uses the following words to describe the center. "The Veterans Center serves as a home base where I can go not only for educational guidance, but resources, fellowship, and a quiet place to study and complete assignments." I'm going to step aside from the presentation a bit. I want to personally thank all those who are currently serving and all those who have served. Thank you. Moving on to our dual-credit program. In spring 2023, our dual-credit team is serving over 1,300 students whom are enrolled in over 8,300 credits. Over 130 of these students are on track to graduate from NIC at the close of this semester. Amazing. Christine was able to share her celebration during our December board meeting, but if my memory serves me, there were some glitches with technology in the sharing of her slideshow. So I've shortened it to two slides, and knowing she tells the story of our students' journey far better than me, I'm going to use Christine's words. She said, "Here are a few pictures of our prize-winning students. I love to see those smiling faces. Our Sandpoint campus serves a very mixed population. Students come to us from the far corners of the northern counties, Clark Fork, Priest River, Bonner's Ferry, Moyet Springs. This semester, being last semester, we even have a student who travels from Preston, B.C. to attend class. When she schedules exams, we have to make sure she can finish and get back to the Port Hill border crossing before it closes at 5:00 p.m. Most of our students are Don Traditional, and many are first generation as well. Consequently, the support we offer is critical to their success. Community members can receive onsite assistance with admissions and access important services such as academic advising. They can enroll in local classes for college credit or participate in adult education and workforce training programs. They can receive tutoring and coaching at the Math Education Center, and the list goes on. We are a small campus, Christine said, but the impact of our work, in my opinion, is very significant." Christine concluded her presentation with the following thoughts. She says, "We never know who is going to walk through the door on any given day. They come from all backgrounds. They face many barriers, but they all desire the same thing: access to education. We are proud to offer that access in Sandpoint, and in doing so, we are honored to represent North Idaho College." And lastly, is our Teaching and Learning Center. Our TLC, as we call it, is in the fledgling state of redevelopment. The mission statement appears on the slide in front of you. The five main logistics being used to achieve our mission include: Number one, being a physical and digital conduit for faculty and staff to share ideas, resources, and best practices amongst peers and colleagues. Number two, creating new engagement and professional development opportunities for faculty and staff to improve their practice, find inspiration, and connect to their peers. Number three, amplifying and partnering with existing professional development opportunities and resources to better expose faculty and staff. Number four, identifying and supporting faculty, staff, and campus needs that improve student learning outcomes for students and the proficiency to deliver such. And last, number five, increasing interactions between faculty and staff to increase shared campus knowledge, enhance student learning experiences, and improve campus efficiency. This concludes our celebration. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. President South.
If I may, sir. I just want to thank Dr. Bradford and her staff. Last month, we had an excellent presentation about things in instruction. And then the other side of the house is under her purview, her excellent staff here, not the least of which, Gail, Alex, Tammy, the deans back there, to help inform people of what some of the things that are happening in student services. So thank you, folks.
Yeah, I would just like to add, like, NIC graduation, it's a really special time. The GED, the students even share stories, and I've been on a couple graduations, and it's wonderful. And it's really special because these students have gone a long journey. It was titled here, "The Celebrating Success of Students." And the students have gone a long journey to get there. And it's wonderful to hear that these students have support all along the way, from day one to three. So let the word get out to the community that student resources are abundant here. And if you want to learn at NIC, that it's ready to support its students. So let's give them all, the support groups on campus, a round of applause. They absolutely deserve that. ASNC, Damian Maxwell, if you'd please.
Good evening, Board, Chair, community. I'd like to start off by reading a statement written and approved by ASNC. This is a statement regarding harassment and public conduct. "The Associated Students of North Idaho College Student Government are dismayed by the conduct in recent board meetings. Homophobic, hateful, and profane comments were made towards students and attendees during and after the past December and January meetings in an attempt to intimidate and silence voices. This behavior does not align with the mission and values of North Idaho College and must be addressed and prevented in future meetings to maintain the integrity and professionalism of board meetings to meet accreditation guidelines. We stand to support the freedom of speech and believe in respecting others' beliefs and values. However, the attempt of individuals to silence student voices amongst others through harassment and intimidation is unacceptable. Homophobic, profane, or slanderous speech is not tolerated on North Idaho College campus, and this must be upheld by all attendees of public meetings. There is a clear line between voicing disapproval and yelling profanities and hate speech. This is the campus of the Associated Students of North Idaho College, and we expect all attendees to treat students and college constituents with the same dignity and respect we uphold. We ask the leaders of North Idaho College, interim President Greg South and Board of Trustees, to publicly denounce these acts and take swift action in removing individuals that disrupt meetings with discriminative and slanderous acts. If college leaders do not adequately address these recent actions, their silence will be taken as an open endorsement of these inappropriate and discriminatory behaviors." So now going into what ASNC has been up to lately. We've been doing some pretty great things. We noticed that, what, we noticed last year that the names on the buildings are always in both languages, but the names on the website are not in both languages. So that's something that we're trying to fix right now. We've run into a couple of roadblocks with that, but we're doing our best to get that changed. We're also, a couple of our senators are looking and going all across campus and trying to gather all of the resources to make sure that the students are aware of them. So what we want to do is we want to create a full list of everything we have, the Math Education Center, TRIO, all of it. And we want to create some sort of awareness for it, whether that's putting up a sandwich board that changes every day with flyers and whatnot just so students know what they have for them, what kind of resources, just to get them the help that they need. We've also been working on Day of Service, which I'm sure you guys are very familiar with what Day of Service is. It's a day where the students here on campus can sign up, and they go to different sites, and they volunteer for a few hours. It's a very, very beautiful event. We've done it for a few years now. Finally, I've been working on the Academic Best Practice Interview. And so last year, ASNC passed a resolution regarding academic best practice, and there were several things in there. But I think the best way for us to go about it is to sort of have an interview where students can sit down with the different division chairs and ask them questions. For example, what do I do if I'm having issues with a professor? Or what do I do if I feel like I'm being singled out or graded too harshly? And so we want to have an interview with questions like that and then post it on social media so that the students can see it and they know what to do in these sorts of situations. That's what ASNC's been up to. We also have had a lot of concern in the past week coming from students. I think a big one was the text a student got from Chair McKenzie. I think both texting a student as Board Chair and the content of that message was very inappropriate. Advising things like, "Don't say anything negative of liberals." I mean, that's just not appropriate in any way, shape, or form. As well as they're asking, let's see, there was also supposedly an email by Mike Wagner saying he needs a large number of conservatives to apply for public comment for this meeting. Also strange, I don't know why we specifically need conservatives at these meetings, I believe. The point of public comment is so any member of the public, regardless of where they stand on the political fence, can come up here and speak and share their concerns in their voice. Yeah, and then there was a change recently on the agenda that said the, what was it? The order of public comment was up to the Board's discretion, and I was wondering if you'd clarify what that means? Because it sounds like you could just cherry pick who gets to speak, and that's very concerning. Yeah, I just, I don't know. The NWCCU is looking at us right now. They're looking at public comment, they're looking at what we do and what you guys do as the Board of Trustees. And behavior like this is just unacceptable. I don't know what you were expecting. I mean, of course, who's going to get out to the public that these kinds of things are happening? I'm disappointed, to say the least. The students are disappointed. And if the students were pessimistic already about the future of its institution, I mean, things like this, I don't know. You talk about how you want to do better as Board Chair, and then stuff like this comes out. And it's disappointing. I'm not seeing any improvement. We also have, what, three votes of no confidence passed against you from staff, students, and faculty, and none of those are acknowledged. Is there any plans to acknowledge those in the near future?
Is there anything else for your report?
I mean, I'd like an answer to that, because we haven't gotten one since we passed it. I mean, there's just concerns everywhere. Now more than ever, I'm fielding all of these concerns from students, and they're upset, and I don't know what to tell them, you know? And so, I don't know. I don't like doing this specifically. I mean, if you look at the beginning of this year, I came up and said what ASNC was up to. Everything was fine, and I sat back down. I don't want to come up here and tell you everything the students have, like, going on, what's affecting them, what's bothering them. I mean, I just, I'd rather just have a functioning board. And it's easier to just do the right thing than to do the wrong thing and then do damage control. If you just do the right thing the first time, do what you think everyone on this campus would agree with you on, everything would be fine.
Thank you.
Okay. And finally, what I want to say is, I mean, is there any plan of reinstating Swain? I mean, that is a question on the campus. And he went through, it was the Presidential Search Committee that I was on. Many people interviewed him. They were there for those interviews. He was voted on. He was an elected official. And even Brent Regan says, "Don't mess with elected officials. They're here, work with them." So do you have any plans of working with him, or is it just a double standard? I mean...
Thank you for your report. I think that's enough. Faculty Assembly, Ben Tishida.
Chair McKenzie, members of the Board, colleagues, students, guests. I'm here to be the voice of the faculty. I feel obligated to include some background about our recent meetings as well as resolutions the Faculty Assembly chose to pass. Faculty Assembly met twice since the last board meeting. During our February 9th regularly scheduled meeting, we passed a resolution on the Board and President's interactions with students. The resolution passed with no abstentions or opposition. This is that resolution. "The Faculty Assembly supports students and their ASNC representatives and asks the Board of Trustees and interim president to denounce any attempt to silence, harass, or demean students in public meeting contexts. Further, we, the Board, we ask the Board and the interim president to respond respectfully to students who in good faith raise concerns about the governance of North Idaho College." Also at that meeting, the faculty discussed retirement benefits and requirements along with that, with what leaving NIC looks like before retirement in terms of benefits. We took an advisory vote also to hold a special meeting on February 16th to consider resolutions concerning the Board of Trustees' actions. That occurred before we were informed of the sanction of no show cause letter. I also want to note that the Faculty Assembly had an incredibly tight timeline once that response letter came out in order to be able to give a response at tonight's meeting. Because of that tight timeline, the Faculty Assembly Executive Committee chose it was necessary to send out a specific letter to the Board. That is the letter that did make the news. And I do want to clarify that that was the voice of the Faculty Assembly Executive Committee, and that did not make it to the Faculty Assembly. Due to the time constraints, it did not work out for us to get that into motion. That letter to the Board specifically is the one that asked for four action items, specifically to remove Dr. South, specifically to remove the attorney, and bring back Dr. Nick Swain and give him full operational authority over the college. That one included all the sightings of the sanction of the show cause letter, the standards in accreditation. Concerns, sorry. At our special meeting that we did hold, we did follow all the bylaws through that process. We had 93 faculty show up. That included 83 full-time faculty and 10 adjuncts. As described one of our, as by one of our senior faculty members, it was one of the largest turnouts in the history of the Faculty Assembly. The December special meeting was potentially the only larger turnout where roughly 90 people turned out. I don't have an exact count on that one. We didn't take an exact count. That December special meeting is the one where we passed our last resolution directly to the Board. At our February 16th special meeting this last week, we did begin with a resolution for discussion that was contentious. I commend all of my colleagues for their professionalism and commitment during that process. We had less than 50 minutes for our meeting to occur. I'm shocked that we took something so serious and charged and arrived with a document with such consensus in less than an hour. Eighty-four of the 92 full-time faculty voted in favor, six opposed, and two abstained. I will note that I was the 93rd faculty attending, and I did not vote. Here now is that resolution. North Idaho College Faculty Assembly Resolution of Censor. With the recent sanction of show cause levied by the Northwest Commission of Colleges and Universities against North Idaho College, the Faculty Assembly hereby represent, sorry, hereby present this resolution of censor against the Board of Trustees and more specifically upon Greg McKenzie, Todd Banducci, Mike Wagner, and Arthur McCumber on February 16th, 2023. The recent and ongoing actions of Trustees Greg McKenzie, Todd Banducci, and Mike Wagner in collusion with Arthur McCumber have resulted in the sanction of show cause imposed upon NIC from NWCCU. It is evident from the NWCCU letter, sanctioned letters, that while officiating in their capacities as officers for NIC, Trustees McKenzie, Banducci, Wagner, and Attorney McCumber have demonstrated dereliction of duty, violation of their oaths of office, abuse of power, disregard of codes of ethical conduct, dereliction of their fiduciary responsibilities, violations of numerous NWCCU eligibility requirements and standards, and violation of Idaho law resulting in the serious sanction of show cause. Their actions have undermined the integrity of NIC. The result, show cause sanction imposed by the NWCCU has clearly resulted due to the actions taken by Greg McKenzie, Todd Banducci, Mike Wagner, and Arthur McCumber. They are solely responsible for NWCCU's recent sanction of show cause letter, and the Faculty Assembly resolves that the only acceptable response would be the immediate resignation of Greg McKenzie, Todd Banducci, Mike Wagner, and Arthur McCumber. North Idaho College Faculty Assembly Resolution of No Confidence. The Faculty Assembly further present this resolution of no confidence upon Dr. Greg South, Dr. Peggy Bradford, and Dr. Jim Forkum in their ability to fulfill their interim roles at NIC. The hiring of Dr. South, Dr. Bradford, and Dr. Forkum with no input from relevant college stakeholders and without following institutional policies and procedures leads Faculty Assembly to view their positions at this institution as illegitimate and unnecessary. Their presence, actions, and lack of institutional knowledge during their brief leadership has seriously damaged the trust and confidence of NIC faculty. The Faculty Assembly resolves that Dr. Greg South, Dr. Peggy Bradford, and Dr. Jim Forkum must immediately cease and desist in making any substantive changes to NIC, including but not limited to college or department restructuring, staffing decisions, and all other operational changes that are the sole responsibility of the permanent, legitimate, and legally hired leadership. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Staff assemblies, Carrie Simonet.
Board of Trustees, Interim President South and President Swain. Before I begin my report, I would actually like to say a couple quotes. "Speak your mind, even if your voice shakes." Maggie Kuhn. "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about the things that matter." Martin Luther King Jr. Staff Assembly met on February 9th. We continue to do the important and incredible work we have always done while we wait for a response to our multiple votes of no confidence. Thank you.
The Senate by Neil Doh.
Thank you, Chair McKenzie, other Board members, Dr. South, and guests. The NIC Senate has met twice since the last board meeting that I presented at in December, once on January 19th and once on February 16th. Our focus during those meetings was mainly perfunctory Senate business, as unfortunately, at this point, we have not had any new policies come up through our governance procedure to review. Thank you.
Interim President's Report, Dr. Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Listening with great interest here, I feel compelled to acknowledge that the Faculty Assembly has raised serious issues which could not be taken lightly. What happens, what concerns me is the lack of dialogue. Now, I was going to go in and cite case an example and how I've consistently said, "My door's open, please come talk to me." And as a response to a letter I received about this last week, I was on my way to Boise, and I said, "Please, let's meet first thing this week." I've had no communication, but I'm not going to go down that road because it continues down the path that has led to where we're at. The, I have to believe that the wisdom of our student that stood up near the beginning of the open forum earlier and said, "We have to love each other. We have to start working together. We have to put our hatreds aside, our preconceived notions. Ignore the child in ourselves that wants to fight and push back and kick, and embrace the adult that says, 'Okay, how can we build together? How can we move forward?'" Because the reality is, we are where we are at now. I had hoped we would be in a different place, but further down the path than I had hoped. Normally with show cause issues, I will speak to this later, but with show cause issues, normally you have two to three years to work through those. It was made apparent to me in the Accrediting Commission that, no, they considered the last three years. It's not the last, it's not what happened in December. That's part of it. It's what's happened the last three years. And they made it very clear that it's longer than that. So right now, we have to start loving each other and working together and not snicker and bitter and grin and give each other little nods and the things that I see happening here. We have to embrace our better selves, or we will not get through this accreditation process. I believe that what we have here at this college is an outstanding group of faculty and staff that are in the best interest of the students. And I believe that it's a very difficult and divisive time for the college. It's very easy right now to say, "Oh, I want to blame so-and-so. I want to blame so-and-so," and that's the scapegoat, that's the reason. Remember, the Accrediting Commission is watching everything we do. If this Board can comport itself like a Board, to be honest, some of the things I saw in board meetings a year, year and a half ago, I've never seen anywhere else. It's not like that now. We are promised a guarantee from the Accrediting Commission of a last chance here. Let's focus on that which we are, and that is an institution. It's about the students. We're here for the students. I have, I've long had a sign in my office that says, "It's about the students." I see focus on everything else, but it's about the students. And at some point, we have to move past ourselves and our feelings because we don't have time now. The Accrediting Commission has given us the urgency that we need to pull together as an institution, as a community. They're evaluating our comments here. They're evaluating the way the Board can force themselves. They're evaluating the comments and the things that are said. And at some point, we have to appeal to our better selves, as I mentioned earlier. This has always been a strength of North Idaho College. I believe the school has that ability to do it. I've seen it in other things in the past, and I want to continue to believe that together we can find that strength again and move the school forward. If we don't, there's nothing I can do. I'm not the savior. I'm a person that's here to fill the gap, no ambitions for anything more, and to try to ensure the school's accreditation during this time. If we insist on blaming each other and pointing the finger somewhere else rather than taking responsibility and pulling together, we will not get through this. So I implore you, let's appeal to our better selves here. The next part of what I want to talk about, just a brief update, and I'll talk, I'll visit, can you hear me okay with this? Okay, when I move away, I'm not sure if you can hear me. If you can't, just give me the sign, okay? I'll talk about this more in depth during a presentation that comes up later. But with accreditation, we're working on a plan to demonstrate progress. We, and I'll visit about that more, but we, we share more, we will share more during the agenda item that comes up later when, when Dr. Kurtz and I present about where we're at with that. I was flying back from Boise. The last, I'll talk about that more. The last four weeks, I've been in Boise every week with legislative issues representing the school. And I believe we're making progress for the school right now. You have to understand, it takes a long time to turn the ship around when it's something this large and complex. But we're starting to make a difference, and the baby's in the bath water, not to use too many metaphors here. But we are starting to make a difference over the next two or three months. I'm hopeful we'll start seeing those things. But part of that has been my, at the end of my first week here, or the beginning of my second, we, I asked for a meeting with Sonny Ramashwani, the President of the Accrediting Commission. I wanted to find out from them exactly where we're at. I believe I spoke to that last time. And one thing that was clear from him is that we needed to have extensive work with the Board for the Board to start comporting itself as a Board is supposed to do. We're where we're at because of leadership, but also because of everything else here on campus, too. They are comporting themselves better. It's not perfect, but there is an effort being made. And we've gone through extensive Board work and training. That's what Dr. D. Thomas was here for and made a difference. We, I have Board members that are working with me right now that didn't want to, but now they are because they understand we have to be one Board with one voice and not pandering to different groups in the audience, in the community. We have to work together to represent the school. Board Workshop, March, Ed, please understand, I have no dog in the fight. I'm neutral in this. I'm here to get everybody working together. And not the least of which, I'll talk about what we did in Boise a little bit, and then that led to our first on-campus Board Workshop. We did it at Parker because we're trying to get around all the centers. And, and I wanted to thank the Board for their engagement and commitment to that. When I was speaking with Sonny Ramashwani, I said, "Well, we're, you know, with Board training and development, I'm visiting with some different organizations. The Board had made a motion and gave me that tasking." And he asked me who, and I said, "Different ones," and he goes, "Well, the one that you seem to be favoring, the Accrediting Commission would look favorably upon because they have a deep library of resources and personnel to help with Boards that are trying to improve." And, and so that's who we went with, with the Association of Community College Trustees. We have a contract in place with them. We're going to be doing twice monthly interventions and Board Training Workshops for the next few months. It's a six to eight month contract, depending upon how quickly we can get things in line and satisfy accreditation, the Accreditation Commission. In Boise, like I said, I've been there all four last weeks, and I think I have to go again next week. Isn't that right, Laura? There's another legislative function they want me to be at, so. But, but it's been wonderful working with the other seven college presidents and the incredible support from the Idaho State Board of Education wanting to help. I met, I've had three meetings with them in the last week, wanting to help us get through this accreditation process. I will visit about the accreditation, like I say, more. But when we were in Boise, well, just things that I did, Higher Education Week with all five trustees, I have to thank the Board for doing that. We were the only school there that had the entire Board there to show the support. They may not always agree, and they don't have to. You can have three two-votes, four one-votes, and five zero-votes. And then when that's done, you move out the door together as one Board with one voice. And if you're not doing that, our accreditation will not be, will not work, and we won't get through it. And to demonstrate their commitment to representing this institution, not their individual political ideas, not their individual stakeholders that they were elected by, but representing this institution as one Board, they all went with me and my team down to the Higher Education Week in the Legislature in Boise. And they represented us very well. And like I said, I have to thank all of you for going and being a part of that. I presented in front of JFAK, the Joint Financial Affairs Committee. And I always say that, the A is not affairs. What is it, Laura? Appropriations, thank you. I always, in another state I was in, I did a lot of work in the Legislature, and it was called, same thing, just same acronym, but Financial Affairs Appropriations Committee here. And House and Senate Committees, I spoke and presented before all of them. I had a lot of questions from Legislature legislators, had a lot of them reach out to me afterwards in the meetings, come and visit with me. Wanted to express their gratitude for the effort we're making to try to move the college in the direction that will satisfy accreditation. And attended the JFAK again for a permanent building fund hearing next week. Visited with Governor Little. I requested an audience with Governor Little. Initially, he didn't want to meet with us, but he decided to. I wanted the entire Board to meet with him. He said, "No, you can bring two." So I brought Trustee Corkle and our Board Chair McKenzie, which is appropriate. And they both represented us very well, was myself, them, and Dr. Bradford. And that was it, but we did have an audience with the Governor, a good dialogue, very strong support for our school from his, from his end of things. In fact, he's supporting in his, his recommendation in continuing it, based on that dialogue, for us to receive $7 million from the state to enhance current technical training out at Parker. I can go into that. I'll do that offline if anybody wants to ask me what that's about. But it's, it's a huge $7 million gain for us for classroom facilities, teaching. And in our dialogue, he decided, he opted that he, that he would continue that support and will receive that money this year. So that's a huge win for us. The State Board of Education meeting, I was there last week for that. And, and then cybersecurity tabletop exercise with all colleges and universities last Friday, which is a new thing for the state, but it's a huge issue, ransomware, all the things that are hitting schools and shutting them down. We have created a united front. We're very fortunate. Back at the back of the room is one of my executive cabinet members, Ken Wardinsky. Where is your hand? Say, "I can," but he is probably the best IT executive I've ever worked with because not only is he outstanding in what he does, and he's on top it, and we're probably the best represented I've seen in terms of IT at any school. He's actually one that you can have a conversation with. Most of them are so buried in the computer, you can't talk to you. But Ken can explain it. He can work that. He was highly respected and set up, had a large hand in setting up the cybersecurity tabletop exercise that we did. So thank you, Ken, again. But also, as part of the Board training, we'll visit it more, but we approached that week as a beginning of group Board training. We'd already started individual training with Dr. Thomas and then her meeting with all the Board members individually, and me, too. But down there, I will talk about it more in the meeting, but we had several meetings with key agencies. Well, we had a couple of meetings with key agencies and other things, and I'll explain that to you later. But, but, and everybody was very receptive. I just, one thing I want to touch on, because I've heard it several times tonight and other times over the last two or three weeks, too, is, I don't know if you know, because a lot has come up about legal counsel. This is an interim temporary legal counsel. We can't be without legal counsel, so he's an interim temporary. And I was pleased to say, and pleased to hear him refreshingly express, when we met with the Accrediting Commission, I'll visit about that later, that I, he said his words, "I am a very temporary legal counsel." We have had an ARQFQ out for, to hire a permanent legal counsel since the beginning of January when I got here. That Sarah, our Vice President, Garcia, our Vice President for Finance and Budget and many other things, she had that thing out at the beginning of January. It closed January 27th. But it's something I personally want to make sure we have a high-quality legal counsel for this school. Not that this one isn't. What I'm saying is, we need to make sure we've got somebody that represents us well. And he's bridging the gap, but we only had two people file, and it was not a large enough pool because it closed the 27th, so I reopened it and extended the search. It will go through another couple more weeks, but it's been open again, three more weeks. Thank you. I guess, March 3rd, okay. In an effort, and we've reached out and we're talking to different legal counsel and hitting nationwide, hitting the listservs, that legal counsel's trying to get people interested in applying. Frankly, because of circumstances here, people are hesitant, and I understand that. But we're beating the bushes because, but what my goal is, what I've done before in other states, where I was the President of another school, and I hired the best pure educational firm to represent us. And they, again, another one of those circumstances, they had a deep library of attorneys for contract law, for real estate law, for every aspect, but only dealing in higher education. That's what we're trying to get. We don't quite have that. We don't quite have that offering in this area, but we're trying to get that. If I have to extend another couple of weeks because of the conversations I'm having to encourage people to apply or to reach out to people they know, we'll do that. But I don't want to, I want to get this done and move on. But I just want to provide that update. And so I reopen it, it just was not a large enough or diverse enough pool, and I don't think people would have been happy. So we, we have to have the right, right person and the right, right team in here from that perspective. Remember, I said my first goal here, because I'm just an interim here, three things, trying to bring temperature down, and that's a, a, a challenge. But we had five listening sessions where we just listened, tried not to offer solutions. But four with employees, they were not, excuse me, I swallowed wrong earlier. You ever do that? I swallowed wrong, and I keep getting tickled, first of all, in my throat. So if you hear me cough, I'm sorry. And anyway, just gets irritated, doesn't want to settle down. We had four with employees and students. They were not public town hall meetings. They were just, I wanted it to be a safe place for them to express themselves. In fact, we had a reporter and some people in one of them that wasn't supposed to be there. He's smiling because it was him, the guy with the camera back here, but he was very gracious. We asked him to leave because it was just supposed to be a safe place for our employees. And then, and then we had one for the, all the managers on campus, too. And so we can hear what their concerns were. My staff, we try to take notes and act on the things that we can act on. And I think we got a lot of several good suggestions here. One thing I want to talk about is spring enrollment, because, you know, I, I believe in order to solve problems, we have to brew, you know, confront the brutal facts honestly. Look at them together. You'll find out I'm very transparent. In fact, a member of my executive cabinet, I don't want to reveal that person's age, but has been here longer than anybody else in the cabinet, said, Greg, you're the most straightforward president I've worked with, and that's easy to work with. So I don't play games. I don't have hidden agendas. I outgrew those things years ago, and you won't find me engaging in those. I'll never sacrifice my honor to be clever and try to have a solution. We will put brutal facts out there together. We will look forward together on those things. I believe if people see what I'm seeing, we have a chance of solving it together. But if I'm trying to hold information back and be a clever boy, it's going to bite us, and we're not going to get through accreditation. It's not how I function. And when I say my door is open anytime anybody wants to talk to me, that's truly so. Not everybody takes me up on that. I wish they would. But at any rate, I'm here. I'm only here to help during this interim time with no further ambition. But I am encouraged by spring enrollment. One of the challenges right now, and I'll tell you why I'm encouraged, but the bad news on that, right now, the numbers that I have as of this morning is we are down 4.73% from the spring of 2022 to, to spring of 2023. That's not good. And that means we're down 6.61% in total credits for the school. So that hurts our resources and our funding. And Sarah and I are having budget meetings right now to try to get next year's budget resolved and what our assumptions are and how we move forward over the last two or three weeks. We've been, I believe, in data-driven decisions, best practices, proven practices. I'm not just going to put assumptions out there that are grandiose and hopeful. We're going to try to make realistic choices and decisions, and if it exceeds that next year, great. But I want to make sure we real, and Sarah's putting a lot of time in that next week and hopefully the next couple of weeks. We will have that sorted out. We have a large meeting, Sarah and I, this Thursday to try to finalize those assumptions. In that, but there are two areas that are promising. We're starting to turn around. One of the areas I was concerned about is we only have, we get in here and we start looking. Dr. Bradford, my team, the rest of the executive cabinet works with me. It's not, it's confront the brutal facts, not just say, we are so great and we are so good. We are a wonderful little college with wonderful faculty and staff. But the reality is we're down in enrollment again. And what's happening and how we're doing that, let's find out. We found a lot of little holes. One thing is, we have a 23% conversion rate in dual-credit dual enrollment students. That means only 23% that sign up actually end up in a class. We weren't processing, we weren't getting them here, we weren't doing things right. With that one thing, we can probably overcome our enrollment deficits. However, because of the efforts of Dr. Bradford and her team, Gail Ballard, who you saw, Ballard, I'm sorry. I struggle with that because I see a double L and I want to pronounce like a Y. For those of you who don't know, Spanish was the first language for me, and I always want to say Gail Bayard, but it's Gail Ballard. She is a wonderful brain and intellect. You saw her, she spoke earlier. Nobody on campus has more horsepower than that woman. She is an incredible resource at the campus. And she, because of her efforts and how we've turned things around, and we've started looking at these things and starting to institute best practices, proven practices, building upon what we have, not just staying with what we have, but building upon it. I'm pleased to say that dual credit for this spring compared to a year ago in spring is up 99.5%. That's immediate progress in one month, and that's because of Dr. Bradford and her team. And, and we, it's just going to be small, slow victories like this consistently over time. There's no grandiose plan. We have this person, we do this, we do that. The point is, we have to do these things now. And late start classes, our eight-week late start classes begin soon. But what's interesting about that, that is an improvement, is registration remains open until February 27th, so we don't have the final numbers because there are still people signing up for them. But right now, as of today, all the late start classes are full. That means we're going to probably have to add sections, and that's because we've improved our approach to things with the team you met earlier. And I'm very pleased to say this. I want to say thank you to Gail Ballard. Sorry, and sometimes Tammy Half, I just did it. Tammy, you'll have to pardon me. It's Dean Tammy Half, because of the Spanish thing, I tend not to pronounce H's, and I have to watch myself. So Tammy Half, thank you. And Dr. Bradford, of course, overseeing that and implementing best practices, proven practice, but also all the teams across the college have worked together to straighten out and strengthen our spring enrollment. One thing I want to clarify, and I appreciate, I don't see him here, the assistant superintendent that spoke earlier from Coeur d'Alene. There was an erroneous article in the paper that, that Coeur d'Alene High School was pulling out of accreditation, pulling out of dual enrollment, dual credit with us. That's not correct. It's not accurate. As you all know, NIC remains fully accredited, we'll talk about that more, by the Accrediting Commission, as the colleges work, as the college works with the accrediting body through the show cause process. Lakeland School District has not changed their relationship with NIC, and we are still providing dual-credit offerings for their students. Superintendent Lisa Arnold sent out a message to provide clarification just a few days ago, to provide clarification after, there were many questions after an erroneous news story was published last week. Lakeland Superintendent clarified, and I quote, "It is our hope North Idaho College will continue to be fully accredited. The Lakeland Joint School District Board of Trustees asked me to do, to do some research on regarding dual-credit possibilities should NIC lose its accreditation. I have done that work, and we will be able to move our dual-credit program should the need arise. At this time, the Board of Trustees has not taken any action to make changes to this program. We will continue to do our due diligence and stay abreast of the situation, and we'll take the necessary steps to safeguard our dual-credit enrollment students." But they are still working with us. They haven't left us. I just want to make sure that's clear to everybody. Things start going around the community, and they take up a life of their own, and it may not be valid. And I wish to thank Lakeland School District and our other K-12 partners who, who continue to work with us and offer students for dual-credit opportunities. Sterling Silver, Dr. Bradford, I was in Boise, so Dr. Bradford, our interim provost, presented this month's Sterling Silver Award to Brenda House, how, how, Postian, I don't know how you'd say it in English, Postian. And lead math tutor with NIC's Math Education Center. And I apologize if I didn't get the name quite right. How do you say it, Laura, or Dr. Bradford? Is that, is that her back there? Postian, okay, Postian, Postian, sorry if I mangled the name. Unfortunately, I was in Boise at this time, but heard the surprise award ceremony was very moving and inspirational. Several colleagues nominated Brenda for a positive, quote, "A positive environment in the math center and her dedication to students' enthusiasms for tutoring as she works tirelessly to elevate students' math skills and their confidence." And sir, that is my report. Thank you.
Is there any questions from fellow trustees on the recent agenda items or responses? Or I'm happy to move forward. Consent agenda, we're moving to, without objection, the consent agenda is approved. I hear no objection, let's move on. So new business, we're going to tab one, the first reading action for revised policy 3.02.23.01 Conflict Resolution/Medium. Peggy Bradford, please introduce this. And please clearly identify the requested board action.
There are two revised policies that came out of the Senate in December of 2022 that are ready for consideration by the board. The first one is the Conflict Resolution Mediation. Policy 3.02.23.01 has been reviewed as part of the college's comprehensive policy review process. Revisions have been made to reflect current terminology. This policy has been reviewed and approved by the President's Cabinet and the College Senate in December of 2022. There's no financial impact and requested board action. This is a first reading and no action is requested at this time. The second policy, Alternative Work Schedules. Policy 3.02.29 has been reviewed as part of the college's comprehensive policy review process. Revisions have been made to reflect current terminology and the current employee benefits offered to employees in benefit-eligible positions. This policy has been reviewed and approved by the President's Cabinet and the College Senate in December 2022. Financial impact, none. Requested board action, requested the board consider a motion to adopt revisions to employee benefits policy number 3.02.17. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I add something? Just for perspective, I've had a couple of people mention to me that people were making comments erroneously. Why are we changing policies during this time? And the reality is, this is part of the process that this Senate has worked through in the normal process. These were finalized in December before I got here. We didn't get them on the agenda in time last month, so they're on the agenda this month. But this is a Senate process, and we're trying to honor that and move forward.
Okay. Is there any thoughts on these policies? I have one, but I want to offer my other trustees. Trustee Corkle.
Chairman, just for clarification, she said 3.0217, I think.
Yes, I, I think that was an error in the board book that she read, but she's referring to, I think, the policy 3.0229 Alternative Work Schedules. That's been proposed in the work schedule. Be free to correct me, but yes, good, good ears. If I may, just, so this, this is a first reading, and so it's tab one. The Conflict Resolution Mediation, it's, it's a first reading and no requested board action. And as I was reading and preparing for this board meeting, I just appreciate just, just to hear some thoughts from me, if you would. So this, this was updated 25 years ago, and thrilled to see all our policies getting updated. I like the changes so far. When I was reviewing this policy, I wished for some method, the Board of Trustees would just be aware of what's going on at campus. I considered the line, just adding, and this is just for thought, and think about it. The president is required to report the parties utilizing an uninvolved mediator unless one of the parties objects to this reporting in writing. You know, so if people, they don't want that, but just an idea. And it may be more applicable to the NIC grievance policy 3.0223, which is more referencing to NIC following its own policies. And maybe that's more what I care about, is the president, it could be, similar wording could be to that, because I notice that one hasn't been updated in a similar timeframe. Like, the president is required to report the, to the Board of Trustees that a dispute regarding a perceived violation has been submitted. Just, just the, knowing that the dispute has been submitted, and the president is then further required to submit a summary of the dispute to the Board of Trustees unless the submitter objects in writing. So obviously giving people their privacy and personnel records, but just trying to give information. So between now and the second reading, if the policy reviewers would just, I don't know, consider my thoughts. Otherwise, I appreciate your work getting that far. I'm happy to repeat that after, if needed.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So I've noted, and they're noting these, we'll have it ready for the next reading.
And like I said, I appreciate your work getting this far. Just, just food for thought. Is there any other trustees thoughts on this policy? Otherwise, we're going to move quick. So that's tab one and tab two. Otherwise, I would appreciate a motion to adopt revision to policy 3.0229. That's the Alternative Work Schedules, that's tab two. If I may have that motion, would someone please say so moved?
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Banducci.
As a first reading, are you wanting us to waive the second reading at this time?
Yes, yes, it is. Honestly, I was kind of just going off of the requested board action, and I was looking at the changes to this specific policy, and it seemed, seemed pretty straightforward. We're happy to go to a second reading if everyone feels more comfortable that way. Otherwise, I personally prefer to get it passed and, but whatever you feel comfortable, Trustee Banducci.
Was just asking the question. No, I'm fine.
So again, if I may have that motion, otherwise I shall move on. So may I have a motion to adopt revision to policy 3.2, 3.0229 Alternative Work Schedules?
Go moved.
Thank you, Trustee Corkle.
I'll second that.
Trustee Banducci with a second, appreciate it. So the motion has been moved and seconded to adopt revision to policy 3.0229 Alternative Work Schedules. Floor is open for discussion in interest of tonight. I'm going to move quite quick. Without further discussion, I shall proceed with the vote. It will go left to right, Trustee Zimmerman. All, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I hear four in aye, and all those in nay, well, there's nobody left, and Chair votes aye. So that's five o, and the nay ayes have it. The motion carries, we have a new policy that's updated. Good work, everybody. Moving to tab three, first reading action, the Head Start Self-Assessment, Sarah Garcia.
Good evening, Chair Mackenzie, members of the board and honored guests. I have the great honor to represent Head Start this evening. Head Start organization reports up through my division. Beth Ann and her amazing team of executives are in Boise right now at, in Idaho State Head Start Association meeting and are unable to be here personally. So I am pinch hitting. I hope you don't mind the second string, now I'm mixing sports metaphors, sorry. I hope you don't mind second string being here. I'm going to try to do this as quickly as I can in the interest of time, but tab three is requesting, and these are all first readings, by the way. Tab three is an approval of the self, self-assessment and improvement plan and report. This is an annual requirement of the program that must be done within the program year. It's a comprehensive process that looks at the goals and objectives of the program. They get together and with the assistance of their policy council, which is a shared governance group that is made up 50% of parents of students in the program and community members. They create teams, and they come up with a plan for the assessment, and then those teams go out and execute the assessment. The program has many strengths. It's a hallmark program. Our, our Head Start program is a hallmark program. There were only two recommendations for improvement in our plan. One is recruiting for staff, children, and volunteers. And then the second is, is increasing the programming to support school readiness. So those are the two recommendations that they may, are making of themselves as part of their report. So I'll just pause briefly and keep going, and let's hear questions.
No questions, please keep going.
Tab four is approval for the criteria of the prioritization for eligibility. Big mouthful, but basically there's a criteria, a weighted criteria that, for children who enter into Head Start, and there are, it's, the details are in your board books, but essentially it's, it's a list of situations or issues that the children can be facing that would qualify them for services. Policy council, again, works individually first. They, they talk through these things, they make the adjustments, and then they bring their recommendation to you, and you're required to also approve them. They added some criteria for prioritization this year. There was some additional clarity on two. There was some additional clarity on two criteria. They added a new one completely that said if the children are in Medicaid and/or WIC recipients, that that would be, would add points to their eligibility. They also added additional household stressors of food insecurity, divorce, and terminal illness. So if those situations are happening within the household or with the children themselves, that gives them, that counts towards their eligibility. Sorry. Any questions about that?
I don't hear any.
Okay, I'm trying to go fast. The last part is a request for a waiver of the non-federal share. So the Head Start Act requires that 20% of the grant amount comes from in-kind donations, cash match, or volunteer services. Historically, North Idaho College Head Start has regularly met the requirement, but currently, mostly because of staffing issues, we're just having a really hard time getting qualified teachers to come work with our program. We're, our enrollment's at 64% of our capacity. That's consistent with the other Head Start offices and centers in Idaho, and with the lack of qualified staff to serve the children, and lack of classrooms being open, you have fewer parents providing volunteer hours, and so they've got to go hand in hand. There is an allowance at the federal level to waive part of the non-federal share, but it has to be passed through Policy Council and this Board before we can request it. So our non-federal share that is required at the full amount would be $859,000. We're requesting permission to ask for a waiver of 40% of that amount, which is essentially equal to the whole that we have from an enrollment standpoint. Again, these are all three first readings of these requests. They've all been approved by the Policy Council of Head Start, and we'll bring them back next month. Also, next month, I'm just going to give you a heads up. We're coming, we'll be coming up with our budget for, which is due to Head Start by the end of March, so we may respectfully request the consideration of the approval of their budget plan on a first reading.
Would it help for Tab 5 to pass this request tonight?
It is not necessary to pass the request this evening.
In the interest of time.
In the interest of time, we can move on.
But I think that's the end for Head Start? I would just like to close. Everyone, please look through this board packet and see, get familiar with Head Start. It's a crucial component.
It's amazing.
It's amazing, and they even have a Friends of Head Start nonprofit, just like, anyway, keep moving on. Action, Discussion, Accreditation, and Show Cause update, Gregory South and Steve.
That's me. So I thought it appropriate, as I said, when I was traveling back, I was in the airport when we received the show cause letter from the Accrediting Commission. I opened up my computer, it came at, I don't know, 4:45 or something in the afternoon. I had like a 20-minute time, I thought I'll check my emails. I saw that, as soon as I saw that, I reached out to Laura over here, who is our, well, in addition to our Chief Government Affairs Officer, but she's also our PIO, Public Media Information and Media Relations Officer. I sent her an email and I called her immediately, and the email just simply said, "Please disseminate and communicate out immediately," as I wanted it up on the web and I wanted everybody to see it so they could be aware of what it is, as part of the transparency thing. And so she did that, I got my flight, and I came back, and next morning I had an emergency meeting with my team, the Executive Committee here, and to try to tackle it. Now, in that process, because of that, I thought we owe it to you, the community, but also the Board, to hear exactly, there's a lot of speculation, people read letters, some things they interpret one way, some things they interpret another. Dr. Kurtz here is our Accreditation Liaison Officer, our ALO, so I asked him to go through exactly the letter, what each step means, so that everybody understands, and the Board especially. And then I'll address some of the things that we, or the actions we immediately took and were taking before that. So go ahead, Dr. Kurtz, if you'd mind.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, colleagues, and students in the community. I'll just briefly talk about some of the components of the show cause letter. The Commission outlined a partial summary of recent events and actions at North Idaho College. There's 15 of them that go back to September 22 of 2021. And based upon the college's response, and with the numerous complaints from the community, as well as internal stakeholders in NIC, the ongoing actions of the Board continue to place the college at risk for viability, including, but not limited to, and I'm not going to read over the eight bullets, but we heard a lot of them tonight, and those bullets are listed at the bottom of Page 3 of the letter and continue on to Page 4. There's eight items, and the gentleman who was talking, the student from NIC, right before, the second to the last, was right on the mark, we're going to have to write to each of these. And I just wanted to give that comment, I was impressed by that. And that's exactly the strategy we're going to need to do. We're going to need to write to each of them, and we'll be able to work with NWCCU to determine where exactly we're going to place those comments. As a result, NWCCU has issued the college a show cause order, that's the highest level of sanction. A show cause order is NIC's last chance to demonstrate evidence to the Commission why accreditation should not be withdrawn. The seriousness of the situation is stated with the following sentence from the NWCCU letter. Quote, "Convinced that the NIC Board of Trustees has not shown sufficient responsiveness to previous Commission action, and thus fails to sufficiently appreciate the jeopardy it is placing the institution with respect to the welfare and viability of the institution, much less its membership status with NWCCU, the Commission voted to issue NIC a show cause order," end quote. Now, the college will have to write and provide evidence to 10 eligibility requirements and 16 standards. The eligibility requirements, it might have been at the last board, the board meeting. Eligibility requirements, I always like to think of it as assumed practices. Those are the standards that colleges that are trying to get accreditation have to meet. And once you meet them, you have to maintain those eligibility requirements. There are 16 standards, and usually a standard is associated with an eligibility requirement, and it's used as a smaller component while an eligibility requirement is much larger in general in nature. Now, fortunately, and just grateful to NWCCU, as Dr. South and I and two trustees met, and our attorney met with NWCCU, they gave us a little bit of insight. The Board Chair of NWCCU gave us advice about starting, looking at each of the standards and eligibility requirements we have to write to, and looking back at the Year 7 visit that took place in the report, and then start from there as a reference, and then update as we go, and writing to where we are now. And of course, that includes demonstrating evidence of compliance. There are quite a few more eligibility requirements and standards that NIC will have to write to than what we did back in late December, and actually, we sent that in January of this year, as the college is already under heightened monitoring for turnover, including departures from the college's administrative and academic leadership ranks, financial sustainability, and academic freedom, as part of the April 1, 2022 Warning Sanction Letter. While we were just grateful to have NWCCU visit us, we did learn a lot about, towards the end of the letter, it states a teach-out plan that's required. There's a difference between a teach-out plan and a teach-out agreement. A teach-out plan is something that gives the Accrediting Commission idea about the progress of the students in each of our programs, and also where other institutions offer similar programs that might be able to help assisting down the road, just in case if the college is not able to maintain accreditation. A teach-out agreement, which is a formal agreement between NIC and another institution, is not required at this time. And also, just looking at the letter itself, and in communication with NWCCU, there are no operating restrictions with the show cause order. So Dr. South, that's what I have, is a brief introduction to the letter. Is there anything you want me to cover, sir?
Well, if you, I kind of view this as us both at the podium presenting together, so would you mind staying there while I fill in the meat and the bones of that skeleton a little bit? So when this happened, when we received the letter, then that was on that evening, and they insisted that they come meet with us, and the Accrediting, they being the Accrediting Commission. And I said, "Okay, I'd like to announce that out, I'd like to have my, you know, entire Board here, as well as Senior Cabinet, maybe some community leadership." They said, "No, this is our meeting, not yours. It's not a board meeting, it's not an open sessions meeting." And they were very prescriptive about who could attend. They said, "You could attend, me. Dr. Kurtz could attend as their Accreditation Liaison Officer," and they demanded that legal counsel be there, and that I could bring two Board members with me. So I chose our Board Chair, it's pretty mandatory, the Board Chair is there, and again, Brad Corkle. And so that was the people, that's who met with them, and I think they represented us well. We had good dialogue with them, but they brought in, well, Sunny Ramashwani, the President of the Accrediting Commission. They didn't want me to release it beforehand, they were concerned about it not being a confidential meeting. And they simply wanted to come in and share with us, "We gave you this letter, we want you to hear it from us and what our expectations are, and then we want to get out with a lot of drama." And they, is that about right?
Yeah, that's correct.
And then we, so it was their meeting, not ours. The, Dr. Ramashwani, the President of the Commission, came, but the Chair of the Commissioners came as well. Thane McCullough, I always want to call him McKenzie, no offense, but Thane McKenzie, who, he's the top of the Commission, he's the Chair of all the Commissioners, I think, whether 21 or 22 of them, and he's the Chair of that, and then their legal counsel, and then they had one other person there. What was his role, Steve?
There's our liaison, the attorney.
Oh yeah, the liaison, yeah, okay, that was it. So, yeah, and so as we talked through this, I, you know, we take this very seriously. Like I say, immediately I met with my team about how to, okay, how do we get after this? We're already trying to do it, but how do we go after it? Because now this adds to the level of urgency, show cause. And so when we visited with them, things, it's very serious. They made it very clear, the words that Steve used are a direct quote, "This is the end of the road." Now typically, when I've seen show cause, they'll give you two or three years to work through it. They believe that that's what the last two or three years have been, and that's why that's not based on December. It's based on the last two or three years, and they even said history before that. So anybody that wants to say it's about December, no, it's not that, that's part of it, but it's much larger than that. It's not that one single event. And they have it all very well documented, and they were very competent, capable people. They did not come in with a punitive perspective. They came in wanting to let us know that they believe that we can get off this show cause issue, which is a surprise to me, because the train's very far down the tracks here. But they believe we can get off of it, the President started, of the Commission started to address that, and then the Chair said, "Let me speak to this." And he said, "I may not have the words right, but I'll paraphrase, that as quickly as you've gone on this, you can get off show cause." Now, I do want to clarify, they are not allowed to take us off show cause and just give us a clean bill of health. If we are fortunate enough that we all pull together and not fight with each other and pull together and work through this, that we can move, stay fully accredited, and move to maybe probation, or maybe back to warning where we were until this point, and that may take a year or two to work through those steps to get off it. So I was hopeful, and they even expressed their support and their desire for us to continue, as Dr. Kurtz said. They said, I said, "Well, what about the teach-out?" Because that frightens me, you know? And they said, "Well, no, no, wait a minute." And they had their attorney, their liaison, address it and said, "No, this is not a teach-out contract," which means, but which means they have to have, we have to have contracts in place with lots of different schools for students to transfer due to complete their education. They want to ensure that students are able to complete their educations, but they want it to be here. And so to that extent, the teach-out, and that they're required to have some minimum level of teach-out when they place a school in show cause, because it's a federal requirement for them. So they put us on show cause, they're asking for a teach-out, but as their liaison mentioned, he said, "We think this is half an afternoon's worth of work. I think it's more than that." But all they want are three things in that, the number of students that we have that are in programs, how many programs they are, and what are the schools have similar programs? That's all right now. And because they are hopeful that, hello, okay. Yeah, my coaching voice, no.
[inaudible]
Oh, you have to be smarter than the machine, okay. So they're hopeful that we'll get out, they have their Resource Officer, they've assigned to us, which was a very big, large surprise to me. They said, "We want to help you get through this process. Everything that you write, bring it to him, it's Mel, and let him read it, and he'll review and say, 'Yeah, this is going in the right direction, make this adjustment or that,' or, 'Wait, you're kind of off track here, we really need it to go more this way.'" So they're trying to help us get through this, which I did not expect. Now, I don't want to paint a rosy picture, because this is serious, and we can't make any errors as Board members. But there also, the thing that was a surprise to me, having worked in three or four different Accrediting Commissions, served on many accreditation teams, peer evaluation teams, as has Dr. Bradford and the rest of my team, we've not seen a show cause letter where they are gauging public opinion. They're watching this meeting tonight, hello, but they're gauging public opinion. They're watching everything on social media and saying, using, and I question, well, you know, that doesn't apply to a standard, how can we account for that? What can we do? Remember, I challenged them on that, Steve. And they said, "No, no, we're using that as a way to evaluate the progress that the Board's making. If we're getting closer to accreditation, the Board, by the way, not closer to accreditation, if we're getting closer to Board comportment as it needs to be, then hopefully the temperature will start coming down in those things." And so I have said a couple of times, that, "Hey, we've got to start working together, this Board, these people." Sometimes that's been misinterpreted as me saying, "Oh, the people here aren't working together." On the contrary, every public meeting I've been in, I said, "Part of the reason I came here is because of the outstanding staff and faculty we have. We have a wonderful group. Whether or not they like the Board, or the Board likes them's irrelevant. We have to work together because we don't have time to point the finger blame anymore, and they're watching to see that. So I implore you guys to help us with that, Board, and everybody else too." And then, let's see, Steve, so then, they were very thorough about the standards, they're all listed in the letter, and is there anything else key that I'm missing from that?
No, that's, there's going to be a five-team.
I'm sorry, what?
There's going to be five members showing up, and...
Okay, I'll go through the process here in a second. And then, one thing that was surprising to me is, they want the equivalent of a full seven-year accreditation evaluation. They gave us till March 13 to come up with that. I requested during that meeting, could we have a little more time? Because that's hard enough to do when you have a year to prepare for it, let alone four weeks. And Steve was already, was already from our conversations, and he was already starting to work out a matrix and doing that. But, and Dr. Forkum, there were, he's part of the resources here, helping with that, and a lot of things behind the scenes. But I, they said, "No, we won't grant you an extension." I pushed back, but was no avail at that point. I'm very pleased to say that they discussed it, they considered our request, and they granted us an extension in the response till the end of March now. So that gives us extra time. And then the next step after that is, they will have a team visit, which you were just talking about. That will be, it was supposed to be the middle of April, but they've pushed that back two weeks now, too. So it helps all of us get through the process, and then they will make a vote and determine whether they pull accreditation, whether they move us to one of the other levels and continue the accreditation in June. move us to one of the other levels and continue the accreditation in June, when they meet as a commission to meet. But they made it clear that was the maximum they could extend things out because they have their timeline that they have to work within to meet their standards and the standards are mandated on them by the federal government. So, and so I think, uh, am I, I want to make sure that the board and everybody here understands what we're, like I said earlier, if you guys know what we know, you'll understand more of what we're trying to do. And Steve, is there anything key that I'm missing in that?
No, I think you covered it.
Okay. So then let's talk about what we're doing. Okay. I want to talk about the response of this, but the things we started before that to get after this. One thing that I hear consistently here is what is the plan? What is the plan? I guess, I guess that's something to think about if you don't read our strategic plan. If you don't read our educational master plan, if you don't read our, our technology master plan, those things are all on the web. They're all there for everybody to list it. They're supposed to be within three clicks when you first get to it. And so part of our board training was to make them aware of what the planning documents are. I'll come back and address that more. But in our education, what we're trying to do is follow their planning that is developed by the faculty and staff here. In the board policy documents, there's one section the board's responsible for and that's section 2A. And trustee Zimmerman and trustee Wagner are working with Debbie Thomas and working through those, just like we have policies we saw earlier, hadn't been updated in 20 years. I found some haven't been updated in 30 years. How did we ever get through accreditation? Accreditation teams I've been on, would, we would have dinged the school for that. We're very lucky we weren't. And, and so, but we're working on those things. We're going to get through those things. So as we move forward now, they're helping with that section, but the other sections of the policy manual, things that have to do with the business and finance, our vice president Garcia over here, that's her purview and she understands that inside out. It's not the board's purview. It's her job to understand that. Break back to them. They can make the macro decisions in terms of policies I execute as the president and the only board employee. And then, and then, um, Dr. Bradford in instructions and student services. Again, those are their purview. That's their expertise. And, and then governance, that's their part here. And so we, uh, we are, we immediately broke down Dr. Kurtz and Dr. Forkum for that meeting we had initially. We took those standards. We broke them down and said, okay, I want a spreadsheet for each one. What are the key areas that we can demonstrate progress? What are the key deficits that we can show the concerns for? And how do we address those problems? Because our goal is to achieve our strategic planning, our educational master planning, our documents. That's what the end goal is, not what everybody else may hypothesize. Nobody on this board has said anything to me about changing the score or had, give me any mandate or anything. It's just to get us through accreditation and continue our mission. And so that's what we're doing. That's what the accrediting commission is looking for. And so we're doing that. We're working through the process. I was pleased to say, I, I told them we're meeting again this Friday, but I told them, uh, by two weeks, which is this Friday, I want that response skeltoned out. We're all working on it. We'll have our pieces, but I want it skeltoned out and I want some meat on the bones of that skeleton. So we can have a good look at where we're at. Remember during my time here, I'm trying to ensure the school's accreditation and I'm trying to do a bunch of other things to get us on a nice level playing field for whoever comes in permanently. So they don't have these challenges and we're in a better spot. And so we have the matrix worked out. We have the skeleton worked out. We're moving fast. We're moving hard on virtually everything that they're asking for and more. Too much to discuss here, but I hope that gives you a little insight into that. And so to that end, one of the things they want to see is board development, board goals. Now, most of these board members have been around for a while and they understand how a board's supposed to work. We have people here that have experience of multiple boards over the years. This is an education board. It's an elected board. It functions a little different than a private board or an elected board for something. And so they want to see that. So when I came in here and I brought my team in specifically to get after accreditation issues, because what we were doing was not working. It's obvious by where we're at. That's not faulting anybody that went before, but we need more and we need more eyes on it, more people with experience. And so we're getting after that. And, uh, part of that is, is the board training that we talked about. Now, I, so immediately, uh, we started meeting with the board members individually. Dr. D. Thomas, that's what she does for a living and, and, uh, weekly. And then I, uh, took the opportunity that first time we were in Boise and the entire board came, I wanted to use that as a, as a board development session. So when we were in Boise, yes, I met with the legislative. They were there with me, supporting me. I was very pleased the dialogue and getting to know people and working together. We have a wonderful group of intelligent people here on this board. Every one of them, regardless of what's happened in the past, has expressed to me their genuine concern to ensure the school's accreditation and move it forward. So all the dialogues in the background, we have to let those go. We're at this inflection point now, where we have to work together. They're trying. It may not be obvious yet, but you'll see. But what we did as part of that, we've had some open meetings that just didn't make sense to me that I saw in videos. So we requested, I requested a meeting with the attorney general for the, in his office to do a training with the board. We did an in-service with the board about open meetings act. The attorney general did that and gave us the actual lowdown on what those are supposed to be looking like. We also, I met with Matt Freeman, the executive director of the accrediting commission. In fact, he and I have another conversation tomorrow. Um, we met with him and then he came in and also met with them to explain institution's role, the board's role and its interaction with, with, uh, the Idaho State Board of Education. And then Dr. D. Thomas and I had individual meetings with each board member down there. Again, it's educational, it's informational. When we say board training, it's not, oh, you don't, you know, you don't know what board member is. It's just what exactly are the things here and help the informational. And if they, again, if they know those things, it helps them as resources for acting in, in, in the, in a manner that's necessary for board and educational board. And then we came back. The next week, we had our first on-campus group board training session out of Parker. I spoke to that earlier. And in that, remember I was talking about planning earlier? Well, in the absence of knowing what our planning documents are, people will start coming up with all kinds of ideas. Pressure from public entities, pressure from different things. You should be doing this. You should be doing that. Well, you have to know what all the hard work that's happened here at the school by the wonderful group of faculty and staff we have. So we showed them, we worked, walked through our, we had each of the one, the constituent leaders from those areas in, in the management, excuse me, walk through what our planning documents are. Now, what's important about this, and one of the people in the accrediting commission responded and said something that Dr. South said was very important. I was surprised because usually what I say is not very important, but, and that's that I want a framework. Now, this is how it's been at every school I've been at. And my training, when I went through several different things over the years for, to, to be in this role, is all boards have goals, but they can't just set board goals. Oh, I like this and I like this and I want that. And I don't like this. I'm going to investigate that and I'm going to drive and I'm going to do that. Well, we'll lose the accreditation. You have to have board goals that are set in alignment with our planning processes. That's why we went through that process. So everybody can get on the same page and learn about those things. And, and then they set it in line set. Now out of that, that profi, I'm sorry, that provides a framework, a matrix for the board to self-evaluate itself at the end of the year, at the end of each year and at the end of five years. And, and that way we guarantee consistency that it will not go back to what it was before. We're going to maintain a high functioning board. The person on the accrediting commission, Dr. Kurtz, remember when he commented, I said, I want to come back to something that Dr. South said, that stuff I just talked about, I visit with them about. That's very important. He said, this board, that board has not had a defined framework of goals and accountability. And then out of that, I also said, then that becomes back to what they task me or whoever the president is with, is flows out of what their overarching goals are, what the planning documents are and what they are back to me. So that's a large part of the process and what we're doing. Now, I've signed the contract with ACCT and they're, I mentioned earlier, they're going to be coming in twice monthly because we have to demonstrate to the accrediting commission that we are moving forward quickly as a board and we have to show the intervention. And that's not to blame anybody that's here now or whatever's gone on in the past. We're just simply where we're at now. And, um, with the accrediting commission, uh, demonstrate to them, but also get through the process that might normally take a year or two. It's one thing to be onboarded and say, okay, this is your job here as a board member. Here's this. It's another thing to fully understand the role. And I want board members like, like, um, uh, trustee Zimmerman and trustee Wagner to be experts on board policy. And I want other ones to be experts in different areas. So we're resources for each other. And then when we have executive session, when they need to sort things out, they could say, no, this is how it's supposed to work. And they can hold each other accountable. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
And so from there, that's what the training and training is not the right word. It's more education and development. But, so we're doing that all to go down to answer that question that people I've heard ask in the last board meeting and this board meeting, what's your end goal? Our end goal is to ensure accreditation in a high functioning school that's, that's achieving its strategic plan. And so that plus dozens of other things. I've met with the Idaho State Board of Education last week and they promised their support, how they can help us. They want to help us develop the teach out plan real quickly and provide resource. They want to help us with other things. I met with them again in Boise last week with the president of the, the board of the Idaho State Board of Education, the chairman, other leadership. And we have so much support between the accrediting commission, the Idaho State Board of Education. I can't promise we will ensure the school's accreditation, but I can promise you it will not be for lack of trying. And we will put the things in place. If this board doesn't achieve the process, if people don't work with the board, yeah, we lose our accreditation. We may outsmart ourselves and not have jobs after June. It's that serious. We don't have time to dwell on the past and the anger and hatred. We have to love each other, work forward and move forward together. I believe we can. We're an extraordinary institution with extraordinary people. That's my part of that report, sir. Steve, anything to add?
No, sir.
Okay.
I would just like to add, in response to public comments, we've, I've worked with trustee Wagner to develop those goals that you just talked about, because every individual is sitting in front of you, all five of us, have goals and individual desires. And, well, in talking to Debbie D. Thomas, a lot of it was not necessarily no to the goals, but like, no. Um, and then, but the next question is, well, then how? And exactly what he just talked about was, is what at least I'm hearing in my conversations with these consultants. So very worth the time and effort putting into it. And, um, going to trustee Zimmerman, I believe you desired some board action to support the accreditation response regarding the executive faculty assembly?
Chair McKenzie, yes, I'd like to make a motion to discuss the faculty assembly executive committee later, dated February 14th, 2023.
You're, do you have an action for, or you're welcome to discuss it?
Just discuss it. Yes.
I think the floor is yours. You're welcome.
Thank you. Uh, this letter that Ben spoke and shared with us earlier, um, this letter is a reiteration of the demands set forth by the Northwest Commission on Colleges and Universities from the recent sanction of show cause letter. As the letter points out, the sanction of show cause is a direct result of the Board of Trustees and its actions, mostly taken in December. This letter provides a four-point plan to remediate those actions and bring the college closer to compliance with eligibility, eligibility requirements and standards for accreditation. We just learned and heard that we're going to write to each comment, which I agree is a good course, but we also need to take action to remediate. And that's what I think this four-point plan is so geniusly provided for the trustees. It's not rocket science, uh, but there are four points and I specifically would like to talk about point number two, which addresses the legal counsel and asks for the removal of the legal counsel, which I understand is an interim. But I do have concerns about the legal counsel myself. Beginning with the December 5th board meeting, as I've said before, Mr. McComber had provided poor guidance and facilitated multiple violations of open meeting law that the board followed. And although those violations were later cured, it does not erase the fact that he drove us down that path. Later, he issued 17 subpoenas to NIC staff and former trustees, three of which were quashed in court as they were deemed unreasonable and oppressive. I read in today's paper that the remaining subpoenas have been withdrawn. On another point, I want to talk about the money. The college has been billed $24,797 for December and $22,510 for January. That's more than $47,000 and we have yet to receive the February invoice. The board and the college need legal representative, representation that is duly hired, following a process that the Northwest Commission approves, a process that adheres to the eligibility requirements and standards for accreditation. Much of the work Mr. McComber is doing is a result of lawsuits brought on by the board's actions, but also by some of his actions. He said he needed to investigate Dr. Swain and his contract, and the board has followed that recommendation. And now we're, we have two lawsuits facing us. In the best interest of the college and the students, the board needs to release Mr. McComber. I understand his interim. We need to find another interim. We could find someone relatively quickly, I believe. I think we should find an attorney who has not made campaign contributions to trustees, uh, political campaigns. And taking this action is an action and it will check one very large box off the list of remediation of the sanction of show cause. And that's really all I have.
Thank you. Okay. So motion or?
No one else want to speak to that? I mean, we are a board. We're supposed to be working together, making comments together, trying to cooperate. Is there anybody that possibly sees this the same way that I do?
Well, I'll, I'll happy to respond that there is an RFQ, RFI out there to, um, replace.
Sir, point of order, you take a motion, you give a second, then we have discussion.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. I, I think, I think not. Um, so trustee Corkle.
No, no, I just wanted to clarify a point of order here. I mean, it's not an action item on the, but I would like to concur with, with what trustee Zimmerman has said. Okay.
Thank you. Okay. With, with no motion on the floor, I'm going to move to the next agenda item. Uh, well, actually, actually before I do that, um, if you pass this down, we, we did talk about, um, there, there is a board statement I was hoping we would all, uh, agree on. Um, I think it's pretty benign. I would just like to read it now for everybody. Um, I was hoping we could, uh, maybe just approve tonight. Um, and we can go back to this if you want to take more time to read it. But North Idaho College Board of Trustees desires to remain a member of NWCCU as an accredited institution. And if trustee Corkle, if you remember when we met them in person, that was actually a question that was asked of us is, does the board trustees care about being a member of NWCC? And the answer was absolutely yes. And, and just saying that, I think
Mr. Chairman, I, I think the, uh, I think the statement he made was you're volunteering to be forced to be a member.
Volun, oh, say that again?
We're volunteering to be forced to be a member. We have to be a member of an accreditation, accrediting, uh, commission. So we choose this one, but we kind of have to be in this one because that's where we are.
Oh, but, but that.
That was a statement that
That by me?
No, 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 no. Not by, not by, I think it was Ramaswamy.
Well, please don't attribute that comment strictly to, the, the answer was yes, we care about NWCCU. But yes, NWCCU is the regional accreditor for our region is what trustee Corkle is saying. That's, forgive me. Uh, let's get back to this. But the question was posed to us, do we want to remain a member? And yes, yes, we do. And North Idaho College Board of Trustees desires to remain a member of the NWCCU as an accredited institution. As a board, we are working on our board governance development and realize the severity of the show cause sanction. We will strive to provide evidence for our report in response to the NWCCU's request. We will also be focusing on updating our board governance policies to bring them up to date and in alignment with government, government, governance best practices. We will ensure adherence to these policies with the goal to become an effective governance board and increase NWCCU's confidence that we will meet eligibility requirements and standards. The board understands retaining accreditation is vital to the North Idaho College. I make them, if I would appreciate a motion, uh, to approve this board statement. And if I may have that.
Motion to approve this board statement.
So moved. Thank you, sir. Uh, may I have a second? Second trustee Corkle, I appreciate that. Um, without further discussion, any edits or modifications, it'd be wonderful to just move forward. Let's call for the vote. Uh, all those in favor of approving this board statement, say aye.
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 Three or four ayes. I'll make it the fifth. And, um, the motion passes with five to zero. And thank you, my fellow trustees. And thank you, my fellow trustees. Moving to the next agenda topic. I know it's late, but I really want to say this, because a lot of people have reached out to me. Nobody wins by losing, by NIC losing accreditation. At NIC, there is no your side or my side. Accreditation is based on objective facts and best practices. Although I was disappointed being placed on show cause status, I was encouraged as I read the letter describing the reasons for this action. I firmly believe all of us trustees will speak with one voice and fix our governance, board governance issues. I also firmly believe NIC will be able to provide objective facts in response to the show cause letter. I do not speak for NWCCU's administrative team, and I appreciate their help and offer that they've done. But I can offer encouragement on behalf of the NIC Board of Trustees to our community. When we spoke with NWCCU's representatives, everyone at the table was hopeful to see NIC resolve accreditation issues to remain fully accredited. I've talked to every single trustee, and we're all working hard to learn and respect our roles and the role of the college president. We are doing all we can to succeed at the tasks at hand. What we do need is people making the right choices for the right reasons. We are your trustees, we come from the community. The community wants its college to succeed, and all I can say with all certainty, NIC succeeding is what we trustees also want and are committed to working for. Thank you. So, moving to the last agenda topic for tonight, addressing presidential leadership positions, Brad Corkel.
Okay, coming on the heels of the accreditation update, I'd like to just make a couple of comments on, on what I heard here tonight, and I had a lot of public comments, but one thing I heard more than once was that the board needs to respect the decisions of the boards. And President Swain was hired at the end of a legitimate process, and I believe he, he's still our president. And I think that the first step in the healing process on this show cause situation is to reinstate President Swain, and this is meant, there's no disrespect to Presidents or Dr. South.
Point of order, if you make a motion, and a second, then we'll have discussion.
Okay, well, I haven't made a motion yet.
Well, that's, this was my point of order.
I, I formally make a motion to reinstate President Swain immediately.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Second, going to discussion, sir, you at the floor.
Okay. As I said earlier, I heard tonight that we need to respect the decisions of the board. Dr. Swain was hired at the end of a legitimate process, so I think he is legitimately the board president. And as I said before, no disrespect to Dr. South here, a man I've, I've come to respect. So, with that said, I think this is the first step in our healing process, okay?
Thank you. Call for the question, as much discussion's already happened in executive discussion, or executive session, we're going to call for the question. We'll start on the side of the table, Trustee Zimmerman.
Would you restate the question, please?
Oh, forgive me. The motion at the hand is to reinstate Dr. Swain as President of NIC.
Yes.
Trustee Corkel.
Yes.
Trustee Banducci.
Nay.
Trustee Wagner.
Nay.
It is a tie, and the chair votes nay. So, the, the motion fails, and we are moving on to the end of the night. So, please, order in the room.
Sir, appoint a personal privilege, if I may.
Sir, South. I just, I just want to, I'm, I'm sorry, what?
No, please don't respond to the call.
So what I wanted to just express is my gratitude to this board and how they've worked with me in my short month, or five or six weeks here, but also the group tonight, very, much more professional comportment, I appreciate everybody trying to work together on that, thank you.
We have some motions still. I would appreciate a motion for the board chair and Dr. South to be the points of contact on behalf of the college with its defense attorney, Kelly Drew, related to the two lawsuits now pending, if I can...
So moved.
So moved, thank you. Is there a second on that motion?
That was a motion to appoint you as a...
For, motion for the board chair and Dr. South to be the points of contact on behalf of the college with its defense attorney, Kelly Drew, related to the two lawsuits now motion, now pending. We have one motion made, is there a second on this topic?
I second it.
Second it, thank you. Is there any discussion? We kind of talked about this, okay. Just call for the question. All those in favor of the board chair and Dr. South to be points of contact on behalf of the college with its defense attorney, Kelly Drew, related to the two lawsuits now pending, say aye.
Aye.
I hear four ayes, and the chair votes aye, that's five, oh, and the motion passes. I also would appreciate a motion for the board chair to be authorized to work with NIC's attorney, Kelly Drew, to explore terms of settlement with Dr. Swain and his legal counsel. May I have this motion?
Also moved that.
So moved, and is there a second?
Second.
A second. So the motion before is for the board chair to be authorized to work with NIC's attorney, Kelly Drew, to explore terms of settlement with Dr. Swain and his legal counsel. Just calling the question, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Did I hear two or three? That's three, that's Trustee Banducci Corkel and Trustee Wagner, they voted in the affirmative.
Nay.
All those opposed, thank you. Trustee Zimmerman votes nay, and the motion passes, three to one, so. For the remarks of the good of the order, I didn't get an update on the basketball team.
Hey, man, you!
I forgot to ask. Everyone, please be aware softball of both men's and women's basketballs are this Saturday. Please support your community's teams, and adjourn, this meeting is adjourned.